Councilmember Green, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Imam Bashir Mahmood of the Haraya Mosque to lead us in prayer. Imam, thank you for being here.
(speaking in Arabic) (speaking in Arabic) (speaking in Arabic) (speaking in Arabic)
Translation for Surah Duhail. In the name of Allah, the entirely merciful, the especially merciful, by the morning brightness, and by the night when it covers with darkness, your Lord has not taken leave of you. Oh Muhammad, nor has he detested you, and the hereafter is better for you than the first life. And your Lord is going to give you, and you will be satisfied. Did he not find you an orphan and give you refuge? And he found you lost and guided you. And he found you poor and made you self-sufficient. So as for the orphan, do not oppress him. And as for the petitioner, do not repel him. But as for the favor of your Lord, report it. Thank you.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to suspend with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal was approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go around the dais for updates and resolutions, starting with Councilmember Bangston.
Thank you, President Harden. Just a couple announcements from me this evening. First, I just wanted to announce to everyone that our hearing on the CID, Special Improvement District Reauthorization, will be postponed. That was scheduled for this Thursday, so please keep a lookout for the new date. Also, I just wanted to remind folks that the deadline to sign up for credit monitoring services is March 31st. Again, that is free credit monitoring services to all residents or those who may feel that they were impacted by the cyber incident that the city experienced last year. Again, that is for those individuals as well as their families. So we're again encourage folks, if you know of any networks that you're in or organizations that you lead, please allow folks to know that they can still sign up until March 31st. Again, that is free of charge through Experian. And they can go to the city's website, www.columbus.gov, to get more information and sign up for that. Last but not least, Council President, I am one of the newest board members of Celebrate One, and I'm really excited about that work. Today, we had the privilege actually to get a progress report on where we are as a community led by our executive director, Ms. Danielle Talkes. I wanted to give her the floor just to share some of those updates that we shared this morning at breakfast and to talk about the progress that we're making, but also I think the direction that we are going. So with that, Director Tong.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden, Councilmember Bangston, and thank you for your attendance today. This year marks 10 years of the existence of Celebrate One. And so today's progress forum really covered the progress that we have made and the understanding of the progress still to come, the work that we still have to do within our community. So when we started out in 2014, we started with an infant mortality rate of over 10 babies lost in every 1,000 live births. 10 babies lost in every 1,000 live births. Today, we're looking at an infant mortality rate of 7.2. And last year, we lost around 126 babies, which is a lot of children. It is progress from 2014, but it is still a lot of children. So we know that there are some items that drive that rate. So for example, we are looking to encourage early access to prenatal care in the first trimester. We saw that rate dip, the number of folks who accessed prenatal care in the first trimester over time, and we're looking to have that increase. Additionally, we want to make sure that we are coordinating services, addressing maternal mental health, ensuring that folks have healthy preconception health prior to pregnancy, and really coordinating their lives. There is so much about the social determinants of health and about racial discrimination that is at play in the infant maternal health space. And that is the work that's going to take us into the future. So looking at health equities, looking at coordination, ensuring early access to prenatal care and preconception health. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Tong. And again, I think what came out of the update this morning that I was excited about is that we're making real progress. There is still so much work to be done. We still have a stubbornly high disproportion of our babies that are dying that are black, and that we have to address that. And we know that that's specifically because of systemic racism and issues that we have to address. But collectively, as a community, we are continuing to have this conversation 10 years later. And so I'm so excited about your leadership, Director, and the progress that we have made. This morning, we had our counterparts from Cleveland, as well as our Director of Children and Youth from the state. So this is much bigger than just one organization. It's much bigger than one organization can handle. So this collective impact model of us all really wrapping our arms around this and understanding that our most vulnerable's health outcomes are indicative of our community's health. And we have to make sure that we continue to put that forward. I was at an event this weekend, and they said that there is an African tribe that they say hello by saying to themselves, "How are the children doing?" They don't say how your bank account is or how things are going in the household. They say, "How are the children?" And if the response isn't, "The children are well," then we're missing the mark. And so for us, until that is our response every single day at every level, we will continue this work. So thank you, Director Tong. I'm excited to be a member of the Board of Celebrate One. So Dad's Caucus, we've got some work to do. So just so y'all know, I'm gonna be asking y'all for a lot of stuff these days. So really excited about that. So thank you. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of announcements and one resolution today. So first, I want to thank my staff, Jessica and Amaris, my council colleagues, and all of council staff and our partners in the administration, community friends and partners, for the love, support, prayers, and acts of kindness that me and my family have received after the passing of my mom. Guys, I really thought I could do this. Give me a second. Okay, I would not ordinarily do this here, but I feel like I shared so much of my mom, her life and her experiences with all of you. Her experience as an immigrant rebuilding her life, her use of public transit. I'm pretty sure she was a top-five user of 311. Her support of my dad as a small business owner, and her most recent experiences as an older adult aging in place. She loved Columbus fiercely, and we will miss her dearly. And it's appropriate that I talk about my mom, who represents the experiences of so many hard-working women in the city as we celebrate Women's History Month and acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of women. It's also a time to continue to advocate for the equity and prosperity of women and families. Tomorrow, March 25th, is Women's Equal Pay Day. Bringing it back, Women's Equal Pay Day is the date that symbolizes how far into the year women in the U.S. must work to earn what men earned in the previous year. Each year, this symbolic day is used to raise awareness around and combat the impact of pay inequities. Because women earn less on average than men, they must work longer for the same amount of pay. The wage gap is even greater for most women of color. Starting in 2022, data now includes part-time, seasonal, and gig workers, many of who are essential workers piecing together multiple part-time jobs just to get by. Equal Pay Day 2025 marks the current state of the gender pay gap for women. 83% for full-time, year-round workers, and 75% for all workers, including part-time and seasonal. So essentially, that's 83 cents on the dollar and 75 cents on the dollar, respectively, and it adds up. The loss of lifetime earnings is over $500,000 on average for women and over $800,000 for college-educated women. 2059, that's approximately how long it's projected. It would take for women's pay to catch up to men's pay. And if current trends continue, Latina women will wait over 200 years for equal pay. Black women will wait over 100 years. And we are losing ground. Last year, Women's Equal Pay Day was March 5th. This year, we're a full 20 days later. Essentially, that's a whole nother paycheck that we are behind. Luckily, whether it's here in these chambers with legislation or around the city during advocacy for equal pay, closing the opportunity gap, opportunities for home ownership, or instilling and exposing our girls to opportunity, Columbus is committed to the prosperity of women and families. And with that, I would like to introduce Resolution 0040X 2025 to recognize March 2025 as Women's History Month in the city of Columbus. As I'm speaking, we have some special guests here with us in chambers. If you all could make your way to the podium. March is Women's History Month, a time to celebrate the extraordinary contributions of women throughout history and recognize the powerful impact they continue to have in shaping our communities. This month, we honor the innovators and leaders who have broken barriers and paved the way for future generations. It is also an opportunity to acknowledge the incredible work being done by women-serving organizations whose dedication and commitment uplift and empower women in our community every day. I'm excited to have with us here today from Motherful, the YWCA, the Columbus Chamber of Commerce, Epic Youth, Erin Pink, ICE mentors, AIA, Dress for Success, and the Ohio Women's Alliance. I would like to invite Heidi Howells from Motherful and Erin Hathaway from Epic Youth to the podium to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Harden, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, and esteemed council members. My name is Erin Hathaway. I'm the Executive Director of Epic Youth. And with me today is one of my team members, Jayla Manley, and two of my girl leaders in our Epic City Council, Cameron and Yasmin. And I stand before you today with deep gratitude as we accept this meaningful resolution in recognition of Women's History Month amongst the other women with me today. At Epic Youth, we offer gender-focused programs called Erin Pink Girl Empowerment. And through those programs, we are intentional about creating spaces for girls to learn, to advocate for themselves and others, to build resilience and to develop leadership skills needed to navigate the change in this world around them. We believe that when girls are given the tools to lead, they will not only thrive, but bring others along with them. With support of Columbus City and our efforts are magnified. As a woman leader in our community, I feel seen, I feel valued, and I feel supported, and that matters deeply. This resolution is a reflection of that support, and it sends a powerful message that this city stands behind the advancement of women and girls. And I appreciate you, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, for being a champion of our work. And your message just before we stepped in here, it was so powerful, and it continues to push and propel me as a leader to continue to move forward and understand the purpose of why we do what we do.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much for having us, especially Councilmember Barosa de Padilla. And we want to give our heartfelt condolences about your mother, the loss of your mother. It is so important to highlight and recognize the work of women this month and every month, and particularly important in trying times like these. Motherful, the organization co-founded by myself and my co-founder Lisa Woodward, is a Black Indigenous Mothers of Color-led, multiracial grassroots collective of single mothers in Columbus, Ohio, whose mission is to support, empower, and nurture single mother families through community, education, resources, arts, and wellness. Founded in 2018 by single mothers and for single mothers, Motherful is a living, breathing, radical vision of the collective future of motherhood. Our collective currently has 600 members and is growing. We are a non-hierarchical, matriarchal organization focused on reproductive and gender justice, racial justice, climate justice, maternal justice, and the intersections where these meet. We're the proud creators alongside our partners Rise Together Innovation Institute and Up Together of the Ohio Mothers Trust, which is an unconditional guaranteed income program that launched in December 2024, the first of its kind in Columbus, Ohio. And we are in the process of launching our Motherful Housing Project for single moms. Investing in women means investing in the community. And when we come together to do that, everyone benefits. Just a reminder that we're not going anywhere, and we're not gonna change. Women's History Month is this month and every month. Thank you.
Well, first, I would like to open it up to my colleagues. If there's any comments that they want to make, especially my fellow Women's Caucus members. Only one of you can talk, unfortunately. Councilmember de Akhaur is still suffering from laryngitis, but...
We're glad you're here, Councilmember de Akhaur. I just want to extend a sincere heartfelt thank you to everyone for taking time out of their busy schedules to be here today, for the work that you do every single day to uplift and empower this community and the women that are in it. And you know, I think that it is a wild time that we are headed towards right now. And one thing that I know for sure is that there is power in community. There is power in standing together for the right thing, and then the next right thing, and then the next right thing after that. And I know that's what each of you has always been doing. And I know that you will continue doing that work. And it is an absolute honor and a privilege to stand beside you as we barrel towards the future. So thank you.
Any other comments?
Just thank you. I was picking up where Councilmember left off. Each of you individually represent so much power, but together, seeing these women stand in front of us shows us just the diversity and the strength of women. And what, I think it was Congresswoman Beatty who coined the term, "When women succeed, we all succeed." That is true. That is true. And so we're just grateful for you. We are excited for our future, even though we do have some tough times. But we know that we work together and we'll move things forward. I was reminded by our auditor that, speaking of Women and Women's History Month, that Ms. Charlene Campbell used to work for our auditor and is the mother of one of our speakers here today. But it just shows the connection and shows a long history of moving our community forward. So thank you.
Yes, I too would like to thank you for your work. For a period of five years, I had the honor and distinction as serving as the first man of the YWCA, as my wife was the CEO of YWCA for a period of five years. So I saw firsthand how important these organizations are, serving everything from girls to families, for childcare, for elder care. These organizations are special. Keep doing the work you're doing. And I also know, again, as the first man, how tireless and how sometimes how thankless your work is, unfortunately. So keep doing what you're doing. People are watching you, and so many people appreciate you. You are making a difference.
So I just wanted to say thank you again. We had a little reception before the council meeting. I think that first and foremost, I think that women are dope. We are at the center of every movement. We are at the center of every historical event. We don't always get the title. We don't always get the recognition, and we certainly don't always get the pay. And you can try to erase words, but you can't erase us. And you can't erase what we do every single day. And you know, whether it's in these chambers and creating equity and prosperity for people or the important work that you do every day, whether it's with young girls or mothers or families, when investment in women is an investment in community. And so I like to say whenever there's a month, and I'm lucky enough to get at least two, right, as a woman and as a Latina, being a woman is a 365 proposition. We just invite other people to the party for at least 31 days. So you're welcome. Welcome to the party. Another way that you can support women throughout this month is support women-owned businesses, support and appreciate the women who are around you. Say thank you. Give to that organization that is continuing to serve women. And just remember that what women do and the way that women make history happens every day, all the time. So thank you again. And with that, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Congratulations to us.
No way.
Okay, I have one final announcement, and then I'm done. Look, I haven't been here for two weeks, so welcome back. First, I want to thank and congratulate Councilmember de Akhaur for hosting a Women's History event honoring our women veterans and veterans that have served in the military. It is a very special and unique experience, and so I want to thank you for your work. I heard the event was a great success. I'm sad I missed it next year, and so there. I also would like to extend an invitation to all of you to the Third Annual Women's History Month Celebration of Women's Work this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. at Strongwater. The event is an exciting opportunity to connect with prominent leaders in our community in engaging 15-minute roundtable sessions. We're excited to have state representatives, entrepreneurs, and women's health advocates and practitioners. The event will also feature music by DJ Rosah, a vendor and resource market of women-serving businesses and organizations, refreshments for all attendees, and it will be facilitated by Caroline Inspires, who is extra special and always gets the party going. So I hope that you will all attend this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. And with that, that's all I have this evening, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember, and welcome back. Councilmember Beatty.
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember de Akhaur. Press podium. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just want to remind everybody that the 2025 Cleaner Columbus Citywide Cleanup will be April 5th with a kickoff at the Goodell Shelter House. To sign up yourself or a team for this year's cleanup, please go to cleanercolumbus.org. We look forward to seeing you on April 5th. I would also like to welcome Ms. Paula Aronbeck to council this evening, along with my mother-in-law, Charlene. Paula is a foreign exchange student from Olm, Germany, and has become part of our family this year. So her father is a battalion chief for Olm's Fire Department. So we spent the day meeting with the best division of fire in the U.S. in Chief Hap, and the afternoon, meeting with the best division of police in the U.S. with Chief Bryant. So we also met the best economic development director, Mike Stevens, earlier. So we had a great day, and I want to thank her for coming today. That is all I have this evening, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember White. And thank you, Councilmember. I don't have any special announcements, so are there any comments from the city attorney's office, from the auditor? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from tonight's agenda? Hearing none, may we now have a motion to waive the reading of Title of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
In Finance and Governance, we have ordinance 560, 629, 684, 722, 727, 732, and 743-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business, ordinances 713-2025. Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinances 502, 599, 643, and 728-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, we have ordinances 569 and 729-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinance 290, 317, 318, 319, 453, 467, 468, 504, 515, 543, 545, 546, 568, 597, 607, 612, 617, and 700-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances 587, 590, 724, 726, 736, and 737-2025. Zoning Committee, we have ordinance 763, 741, 746, 750, 753, and 764-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression, 47X-2025. Finance and Governance Committee, ordinance 450, 498, 521, 588, 594, 595, 601, 641, 660, 721, and 803-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinances 583 and 740-2025. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 414, 482, 547, 603, 605, 638, 731-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinance 368-2025. Workforce Education and Labor Committee, ordinances 396, 664, and 760-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinance 289, 442, 473, 490, 636, and 656-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance 434, 458, 469, 470, 493, 556, 637, 642, 655, 695-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 114, 196, 276, 372, 432, 439, 476, 497, 500, 517, and 536-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances 645 and 646-2025. Appointments from the mayor, we have Appointments 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, and 61-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing no question or comments on the consent portion of the agenda, may I have a motion for approval of these items? Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Bangston.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 0458-2025, from which I'm abstaining.
Barosa de Padilla. Beatty. de Akhaur.
Yes.
Dorance. Green. Remy. White. President Harden.
Yes, consent agenda is passed. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance and Governance Committee, chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, Council President. And before I go into my ordinances, I got caught up in my announcements and excited. Speaking about Celebrate One and everything, the work that we're doing, I just want to let everyone know here that JP Dorval, my aide, had his first baby. It was successful, and so we're really excited. Yesterday at 1:13 a.m., so just want to say congratulations to JP and to him and his wife. And it's a baby girl, so I lost on the bet. I thought it would be a baby boy. So if my comments are messed up today, it's Jonathan Brown's fault, so I'll just say that. No, he did a great job. Anyway.
Did they name her Nicole? Nick Cole?
No, that didn't make the short list, unfortunately. So with that, I'll go into Finance and Governance Committee. First, we have ordinance 03- Finance and Governance Committee. First, we have ordinance 0312-2025 to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to enter into contract with Greater Columbus Arts Council, Inc., for the purpose of fostering and sustaining arts and cultural services that enrich the Columbus community, to authorize the expenditure of $9,481,000 from the Hotel Motel Excise Tax in accordance with Columbus City Codes and to declare an emergency. I believe we have our director here with us. There he is, Mr. Tom Katzenmeyer. I'll have him come at this time as I finish reading this piece of legislation and have him speak to all three pieces. So Tom, if you will come at this time. This ordinance will grant the estimated portion of funds allocated from the Hotel Motel Short-Term Rental Tax to be utilized for the Greater Columbus Arts Council, Experienced Columbus Emergency Human Services, and Affordable Housing Trust. This portion that we're talking about tonight is specifically for our arts organization. With us, we have the leader and fearless advocate for the arts with us, Mr. Tom Katzenmeyer. So with that, I will turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you. It's good to see everyone. Thank you all very much, personally, from the bottom of my heart for the support for over the years. We are incredibly grateful. Jamie Goldstein is with me. She's our creative officer. She's back in the back there. We are finally beginning to see the positive impacts of the city's sustained investment in arts and culture through the Hotel Motel Bed Tax and the cultural fee. As the grants have increased, organizations are able to expand their education programs and social service partnerships and launch new ones, expand free and pay what you can admissions and outreach, including more arts experiences in neighborhoods, and offer more worker benefits and invest in facilities. GCAC has distributed these additional funds into the community while maintaining a very conservative general and administrative line. In 2024, we invested 90% of our revenue back into the community with our GNA expenses at 10%. The following are a few highlights of our investment in artists, arts organizations in our community in 2024. We provided $22.8 million to support Columbus and Central Ohio organizations and artists. Funding to organizations increased significantly once more. We awarded $13.6 million to 108 organizations. Funds for artists provided grants to more than 1,500 artists totaling nearly $750,000. And the new Artist Projects Grant Program provided 101 artists with grants totaling nearly 1.2 million. That the first time this past year we did that as a community pilot. We're going to do that again this year. We had 400 community members participate in that process. We're going to do it again on Saturday, May 3rd, and I would encourage you all to join us if you'd like, or to stop by for part of that day. Our grants and community engagement team grew efforts to provide professional services to artists and organizations to improve their financial stability, marketing, financial planning, and more. The staff hosted 32 workshops and events in 2024, serving more than 1,000 residents. We also admire how the city is maintaining its commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We are doing the same in 2024, the second year of the Navigator Program. GCAC paid 26 multidisciplinary and multilingual navigators to reach out to artists throughout the city with a focus on those communities that have historically not had access to information about GCAC resources. In fact, navigators directly assisted 249 award recipients, and 49 of the recipients who spoke to a navigator received their first GCAC grant. Very proud of that effort. Juan Daza, who is one of the 27 members of the 2025 Navigator class, is with us, back in the back, having this government experience with us. So I'm happy that he's here representing the navigators. The festival, we had a record attendance and beverage sales at the Arts Festival last year, estimated 2.5 million in art sales, which generated local and state sales tax. And we also expanded our accessibility offerings with a sensory tent and a universal adult changing station. That is coming up June 6th, 7th, and 8th this year over on the river. We are wrapping up our public art work that you generously funded with the county commissioners. That should happen sometime later this summer. We've also just released a list of murals that we're going to be doing. Since 2022, we have now funded 81 new murals in the city, more than 40 of which have now been completed. And through Film Columbus, GCAC invested more than $400,000 in filmmakers and launched the first-ever local tax incentive program, providing financial support for film projects. We had our third Big Arts Night, which Lourdes and Emmanuel both participated in. We thank you again for your service on our board. You give us a lot of time. We're very grateful for that. We celebrated $265,500 in awards to individuals, and that included $175,000 in artist elevated awards. A good portion of that is paid out of our endowment at the Columbus Foundation. Finally, we partnered with our statewide arts organization called Creative Ohio to research the creative sector economic impact in Columbus. The direct impact of our combined for-profit and nonprofit industries is 29,638 jobs and 7.7 billion in impact. When you add in indirect and induced impact, that brings those numbers to 68,421 jobs and $14.8 billion. These are a testament to how our creative industries are drivers of economic activity. At GCAC, we're committed to the fundamental principle that art should be accessible to all. I thank you again for your support. You've been with me the whole time. I've worked there for 12 years, and I just want to say again, I'm very grateful for that. And I'd be happy to take any questions from anyone.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you for your service. I know that we'll be celebrating you a little later this year for everything that you have done for the arts community, before this community collectively. Just really excited about these numbers. Again, this is one piece of legislation of three, but just want to remind folks that I believe that this shows not just the health of our arts community, but the health of our economy, that folks are coming to Columbus, they're spending their money here, that when you go to that show, or you go to that concert, I know that we are living in a time of junk fees right now, but when you see that fee for Columbus down at the bottom, it is not a junk fee. It is going directly back into our community and invested into our arts and creative community, which again goes right back into investing in our people. So I just want to thank you for your leadership. I'm really excited about this. I'll pause and see if there's any comments from my colleagues. I know we have two very unbiased council members who are on the board there, but I don't know if they had any comments.
I was just going to say, one of my favorite things about being part of the board of GCAC is that we often get letters or postcards from the artists that have benefited because they've been part of one of the programs, or they've been awarded a grant. And to see both the impact that it's had on them, but not just that, but community. I mean, I've said this many times, I think that art is, art is the space between us, right? It's a thing that helps us understand each other. It's a thing that heals. It's political. It advocates. It makes people feel something. And so people can't imagine a world without art. We can't imagine a city without art. And GCAC is at the cornerstone of that. And I think that how GCAC intentionally thinks about making the art more art more accessible, not just to our residents, but also to the people that create art and that they can live and take care of themselves, why they do that is remarkable. And it's something that we can't lose because it is one of our greatest assets as a city. And I would argue that it's just as important as many of the things that we talk about here today because of the way that art moves people and moves communities. And so I just want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank all of you for every show or ticket or whatever you might have bought that it makes an investment back into the arts that makes all of our lives better and richer.
And we'll spend a future meeting roasting you for all of your great service. But as someone that helped, that voted on the ticket tax, and someone that actually somebody spit in my face for the ticket tax, you know, we've been on a long ride that has changed the trajectory of art in the city of Columbus. And I always talk about the cultural fabric that it creates. And we're such a diverse community as it is, that, you know, to represent in art, it's the universal language. It's the one that builds bridges and heals some of the hurt that people may be feeling right now. And so, you know, our investment in seeing the city's investment in an arts community that is one that is, you know, rising up in the United States as our dedication continues to be distributed back into our artists. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you to everybody at GCAC. It's absolutely an honor to serve on the board, and we accept and excited to send this money that way.
Yes. Councilmember Green?
I want to echo those same sentences, but I also just want to, I want to thank you for one thing in particular, and that is, you know, I think when we talk about art and we talk about the consumption of art, we're talking about it as consumers, right? But I think one thing that has been so amazing to see and watch and be a part of is, you know, supporting GCAC and your mission to, to really solidify art and creative culture in our community here as a viable career path. So we're not just talking about the economic development aspect of it through the, through the consumption of art when people come here to go to a show and then that generates money. We're talking about really fueling a viable and meaningful industry and making sure that, holding people accountable to make sure that we are investing as a community in that big and important work because, because of all of those other benefits that everyone already talked about that add so much vibrancy and, and beauty into our lives. But it's just, you know, at any rate, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can I take you all with me?
Well, with that, I'll close by saying this. I've always said that art makes Columbus, but Columbus makes art. So I think that's a slogan somewhere that you can use. I did coin that slogan, by the way. I didn't coin that slogan. Any final comments, Tom, before we pass?
No, I just gratitude again to all of you for being such good allies and friends in this journey. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Council President, I move for passage of ordinance 0312-2025.
I will save my comments for you. To that day, we do the roast, I guess, that Remy was talking about, but we are very grateful for you.
Not sure that's on my calendar.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston?
By voice.
Yes, by voice.
Barrosa de Padilla?
Yes.
Beatty?
Abstain.
de Akhauer?
Yes.
Dorance?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Ornance is passed.
Thank you all.
Thank you. The next ordinance we have, and again, this ordinance and the following ordinance are a continuation of that funding to the Greater Columbus Arts Council. Next, we have ordinance 0353-2025 to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to enter into contract with the Greater Columbus Arts Council, Inc., for the purpose of distributing 2025 admission tax proceeds to provide funding for grants to artists and arts organizations that serve as the foundation for the city's profile as a vibrant, inclusive city, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of proceeds from the Creation, Innovation, and Inclusion Fund, anticipated to be $14,015,000, and to declare an emergency. Again, as I stated, this ordinance are the funds received from the non-Arena Admission Tax to be utilized for the Greater Columbus Arts Council in support of local artists. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage by voice.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston?
Yes.
Barrosa de Padilla?
Yes.
Beatty?
Abstain.
de Akhauer?
Yes.
Dorance?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
President Harden?
Thank you. And last but not least, we have ordinance 0355-2025 to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to enter into contract with the Greater Columbus Arts Council, Inc., for the purpose of distributing 20% of the 2025 admission tax proceeds from the Facility Stabilization Fund for the purpose of investment in cultural arts, sports, and performance arts venues in the Greater Columbus area, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of these proceeds from the Facility Stabilization Fund, estimated to be $1,110,000, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the distribution of funds allocated from the Arena Admission Tax, to which 20% of those funds allocations will go to support the Greater Columbus Arts Council, while the remaining 80% will go to support the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authorities for upkeep of those facilities. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage by voice.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston?
Yes.
Barrosa de Padilla?
Yes.
Beatty?
Abstain.
de Akhauer?
Yes.
Dorance?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Ornance is passed.
Thank you. Next, in the Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 0433-2025 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish various purchase orders for automotive parts for the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of various previously established universal term contracts, to authorize the expenditure of $3,200,000 from the Fleet Management Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance ensures contracts established for particular automotive parts for the city's automobile are paid in full. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer, Dorance Green, Remy?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
President Harden?
Passed.
Council President, I move to the Economic Development and Small Minority Business Committee.
Please.
Thank you. First up, in the Economic Development and Small Minority Business Committee, we have ordinance, what is that ordinance number, 0377-2025 to authorize the Director of the Development to modify the agreement with Columbus Downtown Development Corporation for the Downtown for Growth Initiative Program in order to add $500,000 to the agreement to continue the work outlined in the scope of work in that agreement, to authorize the expenditure of up to $500,000 from the 2025 General Fund Budget and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will modify the contract for funding for Downtown Columbus, Inc., for the Ground Floor Growth Initiative to begin Phase Two. Really excited about the Ground Floor Growth Initiative and all the work that is being done there. We just had a chance to cut a ribbon on our third business that opened. It is a women-owned clothing store, Volverie, downtown on High Street. And we have two more businesses from Phase One that will be opening here in April and then later right before the summer. So again, excited about the investment that we're making in downtown, in women, minority, and local-owned businesses to be able to ensure that they are showcased in downtown's resurgence. Again, want to thank Director Stevens and Department of Development, all of our partners there for really making this program viable and strong for those local businesses. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston?
Yes.
Barrosa de Padilla?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
de Akhauer?
Yes.
Dorance?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Ornance is passed.
Thank you. And last, in our committees this evening, we have ordinance 0625-2025 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a contract with Priscilla Tyson Consulting LLC to assist with the completion and opening of the Poindexter Village Museum and Cultural Center, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure in an amount up to $50,000 within the Neighborhoods Initiative Subfund, to authorize an expenditure in an amount up to $75,000 from the Department of Development General Fund, to allow for reimbursement for expenditures incurred prior to the purchase order, and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code. This ordinance establishes a contract with Priscilla Arch Consulting Tyson LLC to assist with the completion of the Poindexter Village Museum and Cultural Center. Really excited about the work that has been done to really advance this particular project. What will be, what will come out of this is a development of the Poindexter Village Museum and Cultural Center, which is a center that will celebrate the African-American history here in Columbus, as well as the history of the African-American church here in Columbus. As someone who is a product of Poindexter Village, I am really excited to see that that heritage is being documented, that is being preserved, and being displayed, not only for the residents of Columbus, but for all of Ohio to see. So I'm really excited to advance this piece of legislation. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden?
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden. And want a special thank you to Councilmember de Akhauer for all of the votes by voice this evening. She has the NPR thing going tonight, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla. Our next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. I have two ordinances in Public Service and Transportation today. Before we begin, I would like to explain an ordinance on our consent agenda and changes to our micro-mobility fleet. On December 3rd of last year, we held a public hearing within this committee to discuss Bike Plus and changes to our micro-mobility fleet. That's the scooters and the bikes that you see that are available to rent and ride around the city. During our public hearing, we discussed a request for proposal that went out for the city and discussed new rideshare options and changes to streamline our city code. At that time, it was the city's intention that we would select one company that would provide multiple mobility options that were not currently available, as well as opportunity for greater partnership and accountability. What you may have noticed is that we currently have more than one rideshare company. So, I would like to invite up to the podium, the Division of Parking and Mobility Division Administrator, Justin Goodwin. Are you going to speak from there? Actually, Justin, hi, see you. If you could, tell us a little bit about the ordinance that's on, ordinance 0482-2025, on the consent agenda. If you could give us a little bit about what the RFP process was and what this legislation will actually and in fact do.
Certainly. Good evening, Chair Barosa de Padilla. As you noted, last year, the City of Columbus, in partnership with a number of regional partners, issued a joint request for proposals for a combined City of Columbus and Central Ohio Shared Mobility Program. The intent was to combine our COGO bike share system, which was previously operated by Lyft Bikes and Scooters, with our e-scooter permit program. So, over the years, many multiple different e-scooter providers have operated under a permit system here. The intent of this new program was to provide multiple device options to riders and a more integrated regional system to deliver improved management of the system, and increased financial sustainability of the system, as well as an equitable plan for expansion into other areas of the city and other jurisdictions that might be interested in operating shared micro-mobility. In the RFP selection process, six vendors responded. The top two vendors through the evaluation process included VO Ride, as you noted, which we brought legislation to council in December to enter into contract with VO. The second ranking vendor was Spin. Spin has operated here for a number of years. Stand-up scooters have continued to operate here in the city. Following the award of the contract to VO, Spin did appeal the award process, and through litigation, we ultimately entered into an amicable settlement agreement between the city and Spin. The legislation for your consideration through Consent Agenda this evening authorizes public service to enter into a contract with Spin that substantially mirrors the contract that has been entered into with VO. So, a benefit here is both operators will be operating under the same rules. Both have a revenue sharing requirement, so the city will be receiving revenue for each device and for each trip from both vendors. Both vendors will have the same service level agreements, so performance requirements around device parking, distribution requirements, and resolving some of the issues that we've had specifically around sidewalk blocking and handicap ramp blocking among our priorities to improve the operation of the system. This is purely a contract between the city and Spin. The Ohio State University has indicated that they will extend a similar agreement with Spin as well, VO launched just over a week ago in Columbus and on the OSU campus, and it will be up to other jurisdictions as to whether or not they may enter into an agreement with Spin. The one primary difference between the VO and Spin contracts is the term of the agreement. The VO contract is a five-year term. The contract with Spin will essentially be through the end of 2025 with the option to extend based on performance.
So, go ahead.
No, please.
Do you have more? I was just going to say, so, to boil it down, so, in full transparency, so folks know, it was our intention to go with one vendor. There was a dispute about that. We are now going with two vendors. The two vendors are VO and Spin, and this portion of the legislation that is going through just talks about us being in the contract with Spin, with the second vendor. So, I wanted to be clear, I wanted folks to understand that, because I know especially for folks who use a lot of our micro-mobility devices, I wanted us to be transparent. It is on consent just because this was like a proceeding because it was already an agreement that we came to. That's why it's not, we didn't read it out loud, but I did want to highlight it. So, brass tacks, if you are a user in the City of Columbus, right? If you're not interested in the legal points of it, what should residents expect? Is there a difference in the two? Is there anything that would be different from a consumer if I'm making choices?
Yep.
What does that look like?
Essentially, as we enter into the contract with Spin, what the end user, the rider of one of these operators, or a regular member of the public who may not actually ride one of these devices, you should see a similar level of performance from both vendors. Both vendors will be capped at 2,000 devices, so they'll have an equal number of devices. One of the main points that folks will notice with VO is they have a very diverse fleet of devices, so in addition to stand-up scooters, e-bikes, traditional pedal bikes, and seated scooters, so a wide variety of device types. Spin, as part of this agreement, will also bring seated devices to the system, so seated scooters, as well as e-bikes and traditional bikes. So, we will see similar offerings from both vendors. They will have similar parking requirements. We are in the process of working with Lyft to replace the COGO stations. Those will be, the new stations, or ride hubs, as we're calling them, will be able to be used by both vendors, as well as other device parking locations, whether it's a traditional bike rack or a scooter corral. There will be a wide variety of parking solutions both vendors will be permitted to deploy in the same locations, and users will be allowed to park devices in the same locations with the same requirements for each.
And I believe that VO already has a good portion of their fleet out with more coming, and then Spin will be joining in terms of the enhanced options, further options that would match what VO currently has later in the year.
Correct.
I know that Councilmember Remy is very excited about the seated scooter, so if folks see that, make sure you capture. If you don't put it on the gram, did it even happen? Are there any other questions from any of my colleagues? Director Scottko, is there anything that you would like to add?
Great. Okay, well, thank you, thank you, Director. I know that, you know, as we continue to provide more mobility options for folks, this was certainly something that I know that, as a department, we intentionally looked at providing more resources and ensuring that, you know, if you, whether you are an active user, or I know that there were some folks that were not the biggest fans, that we wanted to ensure that we had better accountability with the partners that we have. And we do encourage folks, now that you have more options, you know, I know everyone didn't feel comfortable standing on a scooter. You have a scooter that you can actually sit on now. You know, you have more e-bikes if you're interested in using an e-bike. So, I'm excited about the different options, and, you know, again, we look to the public to give us feedback also on the vendors that we choose, so we can give them that feedback, especially as we continue to make choices about who our vendors are and who we go into contract with. So, thank you. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move to our two pieces of legislation. First, we have ordinance 0604-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Service to modify an existing service contract with Laz Parking Midwest LLC, doing business as Laz Carp Associates LLC, for the provision of off-street parking management services, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,300,000 from the Mobility Enterprise Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance allows the Director of the Department of Public Service to pay for an additional year of Laz's services using funding available through the Mobility Enterprise Operating Fund. Again, Director, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the, a user-funded fund, correct?
Good evening, Councilmember. That is correct.
So, just so folks know, as we talk about looking at that price tag, it is every time you go into a parking garage, you are adding to that, we're using those funds for the maintenance of those parking garages. So, Laz has managed city-owned off-street parking facilities since 2021, and this modification to the existing contract will guarantee these services through March 2026. This is the fifth modification to our existing contract with Laz. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorans, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Past.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0606-2025 to authorize the Director of the Devices Contract with Park Mobile LLC, relative to the mobile payment application system, to waive the formal competitive procurements of Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,600,000 from the Mobility Enterprise Operating Fund, to pay for an additional year of this contract and to declare an emergency. This ordinance allows the Director of the Department of Public Service to pay for an additional year of Park Mobile LLC services. Mobile parking payments to the City of Columbus have been managed to park Mobile LLC since 2019, and this modification to the existing contract will guarantee these services through March 2026, and this is the second modification to the contract. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Great, seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorans, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Past.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods Recreation and Parks Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember De Akhauer, but as she is under the weather still, we are going to have Councilmember White read her chair of that committee. Councilmember?
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, in Neighborhoods Recreation and Parks Committee, we have ordinance 392-2025 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the Hoover Reservoir Walnut Street Boat Launch Project, and accept a grant in the amount of up to $1,500,000, and to authorize the appropriation of $1,500,000 in the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund. In April of last year, council passed legislation authorizing the department to enter into a construction contract for the Hoover amenities project. This project would tackle the demolition and construction of both a new boat launch ramp at the intersection of Sunberry Road and Walnut Street, and a new mud flats, mud flats boardwalk located off of Front Street near Galeno, Ohio. The project also covers the construction of a brand-new fishing pier near the boat launch ramp. During the design phase, the budget amount for the project exceeded the original expected amount due to site conditions and overall construction costs. The department met with ODNR to discuss their potential support of the renovation of the Walnut Street Boat Launch, which ODNR utilizes for research purposes. Aware of the critical need for this recreational amenity at the reservoir, ODNR was able to provide a grant funding of up to $1.5 million, with a local match by the city of up to $500,000. The grant funding from Ohio Department of Natural Resources will focus on the ramp's concrete surface docking system and docking, and docking system attachment to the ramp. The $500,000 city match is already encumbered as a part of the original project contract legislated last April. Let me pause there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorans, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Past.
Thank you. That's all I have for the committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services and Equity Committee chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you so much, Council President. Tonight, in our Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have three ordinances on second reading. The first one is ordinance 0480-2025 to authorize the Executive Director of the Office of Celebrate One to accept a grant extension from the Ohio Department of Medicaid for the Enhanced Maternal Health Program in the amount of $2,260,000, to authorize the appropriation of $2,260,000 from the Unappropriate Balance of the General Government Grant Fund, and to authorize contracts and expenditures with multiple community partner sub-grantees for the Enhanced Maternal Health Program in Columbus and Central Ohio, up to $1,650,000, and to expend up to $610,000 of this grant for Celebrate One, community health workers, work with Celebrate One pregnant and parenting families, and to declare an emergency. With the extension funding, with this extension funding, the Office of Celebrate One will establish contracts with up to 14 community partners in order to provide health and education services to expecting moms and moms of children under one year of age. Many of the partners were contracted during the original grant period of July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2024, and they have remaining work to complete through the end of this year, 2025. Grant funding will provide continued investment in centering pregnancy options in priority geographic areas through the heart of Ohio Family Health Centers and Primary One Health, while also strengthening prenatal home visiting teams at the Center for Healthy Families. Additional healthcare support for pre- and postnatal parents will be provided by Lower Lights Christian Health Center. The grant also provides support for culturally informed doula care with several community-based organizations, maintains trauma-informed prenatal support through Moms-to-Be, and provides support to the information and referral line, Step One, for a healthy pregnancy. Addresses gaps in services by increasing support for teen outreach through the Center for Healthy Families, provides new support for medical legal issues through Legal Aid of Southeast and Central Ohio. It's being submitted as an emergency in order to allow for the continuation of program funding that's critical for the operational goals of Celebrate One, and subsequent agencies depending upon these grants for the continuation of programs and the prosperity of the City of Columbus citizens. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorans, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Past.
Thank you so much. Our second ordinance tonight is ordinance 0630-2025 to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a not-for-profit contract with the Ohio State University on behalf of its Wexner Medical Center, OSU, for implementation, hosting, and ongoing support of an electronic medical record system in accordance with Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of $1,337,465 from the Health Department Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. And as I introduce this ordinance, I'd like to invite Andy Thomas, Chief Clinical Officer at the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center, to the podium. Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center, along with their partnership with Epic, provides a hosted electronic medical record solution for healthcare organizations across Ohio. Epic integrates patient access, patient care, and billing workflows into one single platform. Currently, there are eight healthcare systems and an FQHC who utilize this program, which allows for patient integration and continuity of care for four patients. 240 employees across various divisions of CPH will be able to utilize the platform, and estimates that a total of 240,000 annual clinical visits will be impacted by the system. And so, it's really exciting when we talk about health equity, and we talk about increasing access to care and coordination of care across systems. One of the, I'll use strengths-based language, greatest opportunities for growth and change is the adoption of these new changing technologies that we have. There's a lot of medical journals and researchers now that are, you know, even going further to explore the integration of things like AI into medical care, and so, we're really excited and grateful for the partnership with the WEX to be able to, to be able to access this, this critical platform, so that we can provide better coordination of care for our people. And it's not even just, I mean, it is the people and the patients that are at the center of this work, but I think there also is something that needs to be said in terms of, as we are looking at, you know, real threats to funding for public health-related work, our continuums of care across the board. We also need to be thinking about how do we increase efficiencies to reduce cost and overhead costs of the work that we're doing, and utilizing this technology that helps increase those efficiencies so significantly, I think, is an important step there as well. So, I will turn the floor over to you, but again, we're very grateful for your partnership and thankful that you're here tonight.
Thank you, Chair Green, Council President Harden, members of council. It is a pleasure to be here this evening. Chair Green, you said it all very, very well. We're excited to partner with the city on this endeavor. As you've heard, our Community Connect Program already works across multiple hospitals around the state, and here locally, we work very closely with Heart of Ohio Family Health and Life Care Alliance, providing the same service to those organizations. The Epic is by far the kind of best-in-breed electronic medical record that's out there, but it is a big system. It's complex, and it's generally expensive. This Community Connect Program- This Community Connect program actually allows us to provide a lot of technical expertise to smaller organizations that may not have sophisticated IT organizations, or in this case, to really help the city bring this best-in-class medical record to fruition. Many patients might refer to this as their MI chart. But as you can imagine, one of the importances is this allows more information to be more accessible to patients about their own health. When they've seen someone at Columbus Public Health, they'll be able to get those records right to their phone, right to a tablet, or right to a PC. One of the other benefits is with Mount Carmel coming live on Epic a couple of years ago, all four major health systems plus COPC in the city are all on Epic. So through Epic's Care Everywhere function, providers will be able to see what happens at a Columbus Public Health appointment and vice versa, Columbus Public Health providers will be able to see what happens at someone else's doctor's appointment. So we're really excited about this opportunity and thrilled to be able to partner with the city to bring this to fruition. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
I also think that there's something to be said, depending on the type of population you're working with, you know, there are sometimes intellectual challenges with people. Or when I was working in community behavioral health, I always, I would sometimes say, you know, our clients aren't always the best historians. And so being able to have access to medical histories and things like that in one place is just absolutely so critical for making sure we have fidelity in the care that we're providing to people. And I also think one thing that's very exciting about Epic is, I mean, you're right, it is the best electronic medical record system, but it also has case management functions. And, you know, as a community, we've been talking a lot about how do we do, how do we integrate solutions into non-clinical practice, but, you know, that are interwoven into our continuums of care, like case management services. And so I think there's so much opportunity here.
Certainly. It's not something just for physicians or nurses. Social workers in our organization use pharmacists and certainly case managers to help coordinate care from inpatient to outpatient or across different outpatient settings.
Yeah. Do my colleagues have any comments or questions? Thank you again for being here. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Thank you. Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you so much. And last but certainly not least, we have ordinance 0644-2025 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for the Healthy Start Grant Program in the amount of $1,100,000 to authorize the appropriation of $1,100,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. The purpose of this grant is to support innovative city or county-level policy initiatives that will improve outcomes and reduce associated health disparities for maternal and child health populations. This grant funding is intended primarily for travel for a group of staff to attend policy creation and implementation trainings over the grant period. Clients will be served through the grant deliverables of implementing a local city or county-level policy change, which is to occur by the end of the grant period, September of 2027. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you so much, Council President. That's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours. Thank you very much, Council President. Tonight I have 59X-2025 to withdraw the objection to the renewal of liquor permit number 5389275 held by Alfredi Properties LLC doing businesses M&M Market and Carryout located at 1596 Oakland Park Avenue, Columbus, Ohio 43224, and to declare an emergency. I'm going to throw it to Assistant City Attorney Sophie Yano from the City Attorney's Office to provide us more information.
Good evening, President Harden, Chair Remy, and council. I'm here today to support the withdrawal to the objection of the liquor permit for M&M Market since coming here in December and advocating for the objection to that renewal. The city has spent hours meeting with ownership and talking through the best way forward upon looking at the history of the property as well as the area and the status of the business. What we landed on was a 45-day closure of the business to put a hard reset on what's happening at the property, including time for them to make adjustments to the structure of the property that are necessary, remove any and all gambling machines illegally on the premises. And then there will be henceforth a restriction on the sale of all single-serve alcoholic beverages at the property as well. With these safety measures in place, the city feels confident that the business can successfully operate with a liquor permit going forward. And thus, I'm here to advocate for the withdrawal of that objection.
Thank you very much, Sophie. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have 366-2025 to amend ordinance 3072-2024, which was approved by City Council on December 16, 2024, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into contract with Axon Enterprises for the purchase of drones, software, and accessories for the Division of Police to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code and to authorize the expenditure of $172,000 from the Law Enforcement Contraband Fund. This ordinance amends 3072-2024. The Division of Police requests the waiver of competitive bidding provisions and award a contract to Axon Enterprises. I'm just going to throw it to you. Director speaks. Can you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding?
Yes, Chairman. Drones were intended to be incorporated in our 2022 contract with Axon. Therefore, the December ordinance, which needed to be amended because I'm afraid the 2022 initial ordinance failed to incorporate those drones, we're waiving because these products will be able to integrate with the overall Axon technology within the division.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
The next is 386-2025 to authorize a transfer between projects with the Safety Geo Bonds Fund to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to issue a purchase order to KNS Services Inc. for the Police Property Room Upgrades Project to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code to authorize an amendment to the 2024 Capital Improvement Budget to authorize the expenditure of $208,315.04 from the Safety Geo Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. KNS Services will install security cameras, network drops, door access control systems, and related components at the Police Property Room. Director speaks. Could you also speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Mr. Chairman, in a word, consistency. This is the same security system that's used throughout the City of Columbus.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Next is 444-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into contract with Community Crime Patrol, Inc., a nonprofit organization to provide citizen patrollers to assist the Division of Police in the control and prevention of crime in residential neighborhoods of the Hilltop, Franklinton, Marion Village, Sherman Village, Old Town East, Franklin Park, Northland, Northland and area, South Clintonville, Wyland Park, and Old North Columbus, along with many city parks, to authorize the expenditure of $375,000 from the General Fund to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. Community Crime Patrol provides a team of patrollers who monitor the residential neighborhoods that I mentioned above, along with many city parks. These highly-trained citizen patrollers serve as extra eyes and ears for the Division of Police and provide critical patrol services at a much lower cost than sworn personnel. The duration of this agreement will be from March 1, 2025 through February 28, 2026, or until the funds are exhausted. Community Crime Patrol is funded by the City of Columbus and the East Main Special Improvements District. Director, could you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Once again, consistency. They've held this contract for many decades.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Next is 548-2025 to authorize the Municipal Court Clerk to modify the current agreement with DBA Affinity LLC for database services to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $9,450 from the Municipal Court Clerk Computer Fund and to declare an emergency. Last year, the Municipal Court learned that their Oracle database must be updated to the latest version, but before those updates can occur, the database has to be cloned. DBA Affinity, who currently contracts with the Municipal Court Clerk for data migration, training, production, and server updates, is familiar with the Municipal Court's current infrastructure and can perform the necessary services. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Next, I have 566-2025 to authorize the City Attorney on behalf of the Director of the Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire, to enter into a settlement agreement with the City of Bexley to provide a credit of $1,507,683.47 against amounts the City of Bexley will owe for the provision of fire protection and emergency medical services for calendar year 2025 to resolve agreed-upon overpayments made by Bexley for the period from 2018 through 2024 to authorize and direct the Director of the Department of Public Safety to amend the current fire and EMS contract with the City of Bexley by clarifying its terms to specifically define the number of personnel to provide fire and emergency medical services and to declare an emergency. So Deputy Director, can you speak to the background information on this ordinance?
Chairperson Remy, for a number of decades, the City of Columbus has provided both fire and EMS services to Bexley. There was a billing error.
Pull your mic closer.
There was a billing error that this ordinance seeks to fix. Specifically, Bexley was erroneously charged from 2018 to 2014 for 17 firefighters, when they should have been charged for only 15. This ordinance seeks to correct that error and to credit Bexley in the amount of the overage.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Next, I have 610-2025 to authorize and direct the Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Support Services to enter into a contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc. for the maintenance and support of the city's 800 MHz radio P25 digital system in accordance with the sole source provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize an expenditure of $1,142,396.04 from Public Safety's General Fund Budget and to declare an emergency. The radio system is used as a primary source of communications from the Department of Public Safety's dispatch center to public safety units in the field for internal communications of public safety units and for interoperability communications between federal, state, and other local public safety agencies. Other departments use the radio system for similar communications with their employees in the field. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Next is 639-2025 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management and Director of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Fire to enter into a contract for the purchase of consumable supplies and a preventative maintenance agreement, respectively with Stryker Sales Corporation for Stryker power-load cots and bariatric cots for use in daily emergency services and emergency medical services to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $85,542.85 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director speaks. Could you speak to this purchase and the waiver of competitive bidding?
Chairperson Remy, the Stryker cots are motorized. The manufacturer of the cots performs the annual maintenance. That's the reason for the bidding.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Next, I have 689-2025 to authorize a transfer between projects with the Safety Geo Bonds Fund to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to issue a purchase order to KNS Services, Inc. for the installation of security cameras at the Columbus Fire Academy and Fire Administration Building to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize an amendment to the 2024 Capital Improvement Budget to authorize the expenditure of $108,490 from the Safety Geo Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. The purpose of this project is to improve security measures due to recent break-ins and thefts of city equipment. Deputy Director speaks. Could you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Chairperson, same reasons before, consistency. It's the same platform as we talked about earlier that's used throughout the city.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Next, I have 693-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Support Services to enter into contract with KNS Services, Inc. for maintenance services for the neighborhood safety cameras to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. As part of a comprehensive approach to preventing and fighting crime in Columbus neighborhoods, the City of Columbus entered into contract in 2011 to design and install safety cameras in five original neighborhoods. The program has since been expanded to include over 300 cameras in 100 locations in Columbus's neighborhoods that include the Hilltop, Livingston Avenue, Mount Vernon, Wyland Park, Linden, Franklinton, the Far East, and Far North areas of Columbus. This legislation seeking authorization to enter into contract with KNS Services to perform full-service preventative maintenance and repairs on these cameras, as well as any new systems that may be installed during the life of the contract. Director, can you speak to, Deputy Director, can you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Once again, consistency. The vendor that installs will be the vendor that maintains and repairs.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Finally, I have 711-2025 to authorize and direct the City Auditor to transfer $5,214,143.82 within various projects of the Safety Voted Bond Fund to amend the 2024 Capital Improvement Budget to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Codes, Chapter 329, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into contracts with Atlantic Emergency Solutions, Inc., Stryker Sales Corporation, and Zoll Medical Corporation for the purchase of emergency response apparatus, vehicles, and related equipment needed by the Division of Fire to authorize the expenditure of $5,214,143.82 from the Safety Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director, could you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Chairman, this is the same manufacturer that we've utilized for consistency of the entire fleet. This ordinance will purchase a 107-foot tiller ladder for approximately $205 million and two EMS transport vehicles or ambulances from the bond fund.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
And that is all I have in Public Safety and Criminal Justice this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing it's time for zoning, is there a motion to recess for zoning? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawer Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
We will reconvene for zoning in five minutes. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to suspend for the reading of the Journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Are there any corrections or additions to the Journal? Hearing none. The Journal is approved. We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Dorance chairs that committee. All members serve one. And Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, first a little bit of housekeeping. Will the clerk please read the numbers of legislation in the zoning committee that require waiver of second reading? Thank you, clerk. I now move to waive second reading on those items right at the lap.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Thank you. As always, allow me to briefly explain our rules pertaining to speaking for council on rezoning variances. We only hear a staff presentation of ordinance that have a disapproval from a recommending body, or if you have a public speaker signed to speak against an ordinance. We permit three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask that those speakers limit their remarks to three minutes per the standard rules of the city council. All speakers in the council variance, including the city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of the area commission are always able to speak in an ordinance. You do not need to fill out a speaker slip, but we do ask that you alert city staff of your intentions to speak at this committee hearing. This evening, in addition to an area commissioner, we have one public speaker signed up to speak on a piece of legislation tonight. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we'll now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? Show me the truth, nothing but the truth. You shall answer in pains, penalty, or perjury. If so, please say adieu.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Eastman Johnson and Phyllis Shear from the Department of Building and Zoning Services, Christopher Lorre from the Division of Planning, and Dan Blechschmidt from the Traffic Management and Department of Public Service, and Deputy Director for Housing Strategies, Aaron Prosser have all been sworn in. Thank you all for being here tonight. First, we have ordinance 3577-2024 to rezone 3451 Trabu Road, being 11.2-plus acres located in the southwest corner of Trabu Road and McKinley Avenue, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to AR1 Apartment Residential District. Site consists of nine parcels, develop with single-unit dwellings. Requested rezoning would allow a multi-unit residential uses with a maximum density of 36.3 dwelling units per acre. Concurrent council variance requesting to include variances to building setback and perimeter yard for an apartment complex, which we consider later in tonight's agenda. Proposal is approved from city staff, development commission, and received a tie vote from the West Side Area Commission. Due to that tie vote, we will now hear a staff report, starting with the representative of the Department of Building and Zoning Services, Mr. Eastman Johnson.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Dorance, members of council. 11.2-acre site consists of nine parcels developed with single-unit dwellings in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The requested AR1 Apartment Residential District will allow multi-unit residential uses with a maximum density of 36.3 dwelling units per acre. North of the site is a contractor's office in the C2 Commercial District and single-unit dwellings in the R World District in the City of Columbus and Norwich Township. South and east of the site is a multi-unit residential development in the LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. West of the site are single-unit dwellings in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Concurrent CV 23-019 has been filed demonstrating a 300-unit apartment complex or 26.09 dwelling units per acre with variances to building setbacks and perimeter yard. That request will be heard by city council. Sorry. The site is within the planning area of the Trabu Roberts Area Plan, which recommends neighborhood mixed-use land uses at this location. Additionally, the plan includes early adoption of the C2P2 design guidelines. Site is located within the boundaries of the West Sioto Area Commission, whose recommendation is for disapproval. The Columbus Multimodal Thoroughfare Plan identifies Trabu Road as a suburban commuter corridor requiring 120 feet of right-of-way. Proposed AR1 Apartment Residential District will allow multi-unit residential development uses. While the Trabu Roberts Area Plan recommends neighborhood mixed-use, the proposed development is consistent with existing zoning and development pattern along Trabu Road and McKinley Avenue. Additionally, the proposal meets city's objectives to provide more housing in all neighborhoods throughout the city of Columbus. Therefore, city department's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions for my colleague at this time for Department of Building and Zoning Services? Seeing none, we will move on to Mr. Dan Blechschmidt from Public Service regarding the traffic report on this legislation.
Thank you, Chair Dorance, President Harden, members of council. A traffic impact study was prepared for this area development and was reviewed and approved by the Division of Traffic Management. Resulting from this traffic impact study, necessary developer commitments have been added within the text of these ordinances that include commitments to contributions toward future infrastructure at the intersections of Trabu Road and McKinley Avenue, Dublin Road, and at the intersection of Trabu Road and Hague Avenue. Additionally, there are access commitments within the text of these ordinances for the developer to make improvements within Trabu Road to better service left-turning movements at the site access point to Trabu Road, and commitments to address the access configuration as future roadway improvements or future adjacent development would occur. With these comments known, we have no further comments on this application.
Thank you, Mr. Blechschmidt. Any questions from my colleagues for the Department of Public Service this time? Seeing none, we'll keep on moving. Next, we have Mr. Christopher Lorre from the Division of Planning for his report.
Thank you, Chair Dorance, President Harden, and members of council. Planning supports this requested rezoning. The Trabu Roberts Area Plan 2011 recommends neighborhood mixed-use for this location, which suggests residential densities of 16 to 45 units per acre. The proposal is for 30 units per acre, which is consistent with the plan's guidance. Additionally, Columbus citywide planning policies, or C2P2, include design guidelines regarding building elevations and site plan design. Staff have reviewed the proposed building elevations and site plan and have found them to be consistent with C2P2 design guidelines, and therefore planning is in full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorre. And finally, we have Deputy Director of Housing Strategies in the Department of Development, Ms. Aaron Prosser, speak to the housing elements at play here. Ms. Prosser?
Thank you, Chair Dorance, Council President Harden, members of council. The proposed rezoning for 3451 Trabu Road in the West Sioto neighborhood supports the Columbus Housing Strategy by building new housing units in a high-demand area and expanding housing options with access to opportunity. The proposed housing meets three of the four pillars of the Columbus Housing Strategy. The first is build. Median home values in this census tract rose 28.34% from 2020 to 2023. This indicates an area in high demand and in need of additional housing to slow the growth in housing cost. Similarly, rents rose 27.2% indicating an unmet demand for additional rental units in the area. In this census tract, the population rose 27.51% since 2010. However, the housing units only increased 2.4%. The rental vacancy rate dropped from 8.7% to 3.4%, indicating a very constrained market in an area where demand outpaces supply. The second pillar it meets is preserve. With scarcity in high-opportunity areas comes a threat of displacement of existing residents. Nearly three times more households moved into the neighborhood in the last five years than there were when there were new units built, resulting in a housing stock that needed to accommodate 60% of the new families. Today, 60% of the rental households in the census tract pay more than 30% of their income on their housing costs, indicating families are willing to exceed the housing cost burden to access this area, but creates instability for these families, compromising their ability to remain in the neighborhood. And finally is include. The proposed project is located within an opportunity-rich area with increasing investment in jobs and amenities, accessibility in proximity to downtown, Grandview Yard, OSU, Ohio Health Campus, and the west and northwest suburban job centers. While the housing scarcity will drive up housing prices throughout our region, in these locations with high access to jobs, education, services, and amenities, we expect to see even higher acceleration in housing price and housing costs. Therefore, the new units in this neighborhood will be critical to ensuring household stability of the current residents, as well as continued access for new families.
Thank you, Ms. Prosser. Any questions for my colleagues this time from Ms. Prosser? Seeing none, I would next invite the applicant and their attorney to the podium for a presentation, Mr. Jared Smith and Mr. David Hodge. Welcome back to council.
Good evening, Council President Harden, Chair Dorance, members of council. David Hodge with the law firm Underhill &amp; Hodge here this evening on behalf of the applicant for the proposal that you've just heard a brief on from your staff. Between what Mr. Johnson had to say, what Mr. Blechschmidt had to say, what Mr. Lorre had to say, and then what Ms. Prosser had to say, the vast majority of my thunder was stolen. But that's all, those are all really great facts and background in terms of what this proposal is and also why it's appropriate for this location. This is 300 units in the face of our community, which is in dire need of additional housing. This legislation, I think appropriately, comes to council with a recommendation of approval from city staff, a unanimous recommendation of approval from the city's development commission, and that is in no small part because, as Mr. Lorre said, the proposal before you does in fact strictly comply with the recommendation for this land under the Trabu Roberts Area Plan. Mr. Lorre correctly cited that the Trabu Roberts Area Plan designates this as neighborhood commercial. That neighborhood commercial designation states that residential development is appropriate. It states that residential development is appropriate for up to 45 dwelling units per acre. This proposal is just under 27 dwelling units per acre, so we are, you know, kind of square in the middle at the mean of what the city long ago deemed to be an appropriate residential density for this property. We are here this evening with a tie vote from the West Sioto Area Commission. That is not indicative, in my opinion, of our willingness to embrace and engage with the West Sioto Area Commission with an earnest effort to earn their support. We fell short 3-3 in parliamentary procedure, as you know, equates to a disapproval, but it was a tie vote. Some of the things we did in working with the neighborhood, initially among the primary objections to what the proposal was is that the buildings along the north side of the site, just on the south side of Trabu Road, were four-story buildings, and they were mixed-use buildings with 10,000 square feet of retail. We initially took that proposal to a vote with West Sioto, and it was disapproved by a vote of four to three. After much study by my client, we then went back to the West Sioto Area Commission, reducing those buildings to three stories, which is something that they wanted us to do. They also cited as a conflict on the original proposal, the 10,000 square feet of mixed-use retail commercial incorporated into those buildings as being a conflict and a parking issue, and so we removed that altogether from the proposal. When we did that, reduced the height of those buildings and reconfigured the site, we also significantly improved the architecture, which is a commitment in the later legislation that council will hear tonight in the council variance. We also reduced the density by 24 units, going down from 324, from 324. from three-twenty-four down to three-hundred. It's a great proposal. It meets the city's plan. It's thankfully, from the city's perspective, earned a tremendous amount of support, and as you heard from Mr. Blechschmidt, the subject of a traffic impact study, and certainly traffic over at Trabu and Hague and McKinley, has been an issue. It's been an issue that's been before this council, as other developments have occurred in that area. But what Mr. Blechschmidt didn't say is that in the legislation, I think it's in the, I don't know if it's in the zoning or the council variance legislation, but one or the other, if not both, is a commitment for my client to spend in excess of a million dollars, a million dollars, to go directly towards road improvements in the immediate vicinity of this property. I'll stop there, and if anyone has any questions, I'm certainly do my best to answer those. And as you know, my client with Preferred Living, Jared Smith, is here, and he can help me answer anything that I can't answer. Thank you all very much.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Any questions from my colleagues for the applicant's representative this time? Seeing none. Mr. Hodge, you know the drills. I'll have the, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Did you say that your client Preferred Living is going to come before us, or he's just here and available to answer questions?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Beatty. He's here in the event that there are questions that I'm incapable of answering.
Okay. Not having the background on this particular development, what is the long-term plan for this particular development insofar if this is an ownership, long-term ownership opportunity, or is this a buy, lease-up, and sell?
Great question, and Preferred Living has done both in the marketplace, and it's, it's a market-driven determination that gets made. They have constructed, leased up, and sold in the past, and they have also, at the same time, been involved in long-term hold. So it's a, it's a, it's a market-driven determination that gets made at a later phase of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beatty. Sorry, I missed you there. Any other questions from colleagues for Mr. Hodge at this time? Seeing none, we do have Commissioner Rita Cabral from the West Scioto Area Commission, who's their zoning chair, who's here to speak as well. You, wherever you're most comfortable, so you're welcome to come to the podium. I think that mic works as well. You will. You'll have to turn it on to make sure it's green.
Okay. All right. I hope everybody can hear me.
We can hear it. Sounds great.
Councilmember Harden and council members, my name is Rita Cabral. I am Commissioner with the West Scioto Area Commission, and I am the zoning chair. Since the beginning of our commission in 2016, we have realized there would be tremendous growth in our area. The original plan for this property was stated on application Z sixteen dash zero-eight-zero back in 2016, and was to have three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand square feet of retail. Times have changed, but the application now has zero. We never asked for the ten thousand square feet of retail to be removed from the application. As of March seventeenth, just a couple of weeks ago, application Z twenty-five dash zero-one-zero was sent to our zoning committee for a hundred-and-thirty-eight units, approximately three-hundred-and-three residents, per the plan, with no amenities, and literally alongside this application, done by Preferred Living also. The surrounding Preferred Living projects, Belmont with two-hundred-and-sixty-seven units, and Hanover Place with two-hundred-and-sixteen units, and this new project, three hundred units, gives this area approximately fifteen-hundred residents and a small area and no retail. West on Trabu, within a short walking distance, is a new project currently under construction, Council Variance twenty-two dash zero-twenty-eight, thirty-six seventy Trabu Road, that took out a small plaza that had some retail, a pizza shop, a pub, retail gaming business with a meeting area. There will be a hundred-and-thirty-two units there and approximately two-hundred residents at this location, and no replacement for the retail. This past November, we passed an application at fourteen-seventy North Hague, which you'll hear later, less than a mile from this application, for four-hundred-and-sixty units, approximately seven-hundred residents. As of March eighteenth, we got another application, Z twenty-five dash zero-one-one, for sixteen-ninety-six Hague Avenue, for a hundred-and-ninety-eight units and approximately two-ninety-seven residents. This past January, we passed an application at thirty-seven-seventy-five Trabu Road, a half-mile west of this application, for two-hundred-and-eighty units, approximately four-hundred-and-twenty residents. Less than a mile and a half south on McKinley, the West Bend Project is under construction with nine-hundred-and-two units, approximately thirteen-fifty-three residents. Within less than two miles of this application's project, we have added to our area just over five-hundred new units, approximately seventy-seven-hundred residents, and no retail except the high-price few in the Quarry Trails. The nearest major shopping area is just under four miles away, and the traffic congestion in that area is like rush hour twenty-four-seven. A small amount of retail space brings a sense of community and safety to an area. Asking for the ten thousand square feet to remain on this site is a fair request. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to ask you a question very directly, because I'm going to ask the applicant as well. I know they had mentioned that they had a previous application that was pending with the commission, and there was some negotiations back and forth. So the original application had four stories, and the one that's before us here has three. And I know sort of the crux of the issue, particularly for you, is that missing commercial aspect to the development. Was there a request from the commission or members about the reduction of the heights in that sort of back and forth with the prior application?
We, we asked for the height to be put in the back and maintain the three stories in the front, and so it would have some uniformity to the neighborhood. We never asked for the retail to be removed.
But there was a reduction, there was a request for a reduction of height?
Yes, but we also suggested they either move it to the back or to the center of the project.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to ask the applicant to respond to that directly. Mr. Hodge or Mr. Smith, if you want to come back? Again, if you want to respond to anything you'd like, but then in particular, you know, I think the sort of the crux of the disapproval, the three-three tie vote from the commission, was over this commercial issue. I think that's what we've heard the most from, particularly Commissioner Cabral and others. But we know that, again, as you mentioned, that there was a prior plan that came forward, that was at four stories, moving it down to three, and if you could speak to that very directly, in addition to any other comments you'd like to make.
Ms. Cabral is correct. The, the zoning, the CPD zoning that is on the property today, it's a, it's a Commercial Plan Development District, and it does allow a tremendous amount of square footage of commercial development, really, to, a lot of commercial development, really making the proposal before council a pretty significant downzoning from what's already allowed there by right. By right, you could go in and do units with first-floor, first-floor retail with units above in a sixty-foot height district. So that's, that's the way the property is zoned today. The, the neighborhood commercial, I'm going to get to the, I'm going to get to it in a minute, but the neighborhood commercial designation in the Trabu Roberts Area Plan, it's neighborhood commercial. It says that residential's appropriate. It says that mixed-use buildings are appropriate, and it says that standalone retail is appropriate. And so both the existing zoning on the property and what's being proposed tonight meets that area plan and that neighborhood recommendation. With reference to retail, my client closely studied that, even going so far as to formally submitting an application to come through the city to allow that ten thousand square feet of retail to be in the building. Upon further analysis, notwithstanding the fact that there has been a significant amount of residential growth in the immediate neighborhood, they correctly, I believe, came to the conclusion that that retail was going to have trouble leasing in that location. In no small part, there was some reference to the Quarry Trail, I think it's called, and there's a pliable up there and some other retail uses in there, and those retail uses that have, that have gone in that development have, have struggled to remain viable. And so, again, my client made a market decision to stick with the type of development that they, that they know and that they're known for, and that is to bring forward a purely residential development. But regardless of the change from the mixed-use element along the northern side of the property, probably sound like a broken record here, the proposal before council, whether it's mixed-use, whether it's purely commercial, or whether it's the pure residential that's before you tonight, does in fact meet the city's longstanding recommendation under the Trabu Roberts Area Plan for neighborhood commercial on the property. Hopefully, that answers the question, Mr. Dorans.
It did. Other questions from council members for the applicant's representative? Councilmember Prosser, DePodia?
Commissioner, so, just so I have a understanding, if it was, aside from, because there was a reduction in the height, is the sticking point just the commercial space, or would there be other conditions that might have swayed the folks who voted no against the
The original plan with the four stories in the front, they were two different building designs. The front building design was a flat roof, and the back had a different style. It's, well, they haven't put it up, and it did not fit, and it was oversized for the area. When they came back with the three stories and no retail, that was something we did not ask for. It's something we need. And in regards to the Quarry Trail retail, that is a whole different price point over there.
Sure. The reason that I ask, and just food for thought, something to consider, Scioto is in my district, and it's interesting because District Eight is the largest in terms of land mass, and a good reason, or part of the reason why is if you look at the southern portion of the district that goes down towards O'Bets, it is not as dense. And why that's significant, when you look at other parts of the city, is that, well, we know, when we talk to businesses, if you think about a Kroger, if you think about other parts, we went through this process as we thought about the Eastland Plan, and when we thought about the redevelopment of the Eastland Plan, part of what they look at, and I think part of what you were, you were alluding to with your client, is that when they are making the decision about where to go, right, part of what they look at is the density. And so we're always stuck a little bit in this area of whether it's a chicken and the egg, right? Do you build amenities because people want to live near the amenities, or do you build for people to live there? And then once people are there, the amenities come. And so it makes it incredibly challenging, because we can certainly, I think what we have within our ability is to think about where we can put housing to then allow for that density to come, so that jobs, you know, retail, other things that people need can come in, because I know, especially that part of the south side, has suffered from some of those larger chains kind of closing because the density has gone down. And so that's a conversation, we've, we've been having conversations with the south side about how we think about how we continue to include some of the assets, both that the south side is looking for, because growth will eventually come to the south side, and what the south side is missing in the right now. So I just offer that as just a little bit of perspective, because I think that this has been part of the challenge, is that we know that we need housing, we need housing in all parts of the city. We need to have some of that density, because it makes it easier for the people who do make some of those decisions, and when they are looking at it, unfortunately, they are looking at a business decision of what is going to be a good investment for them that we can't always direct. And so I want to just offer that perspective to you as we're thinking about this, because I think it certainly goes into our decision-making, because I think about some of the developments that are already coming to the south side, that are, because that development is coming, it's bringing other assets that the south side has been looking for, more sidewalks, more walkability, other assets, that I think that we're on the brink of coming to some of that. But again, I just wanted to offer that as perspective that certainly goes into my decision-making as I think about situations like this, and when I think about growth, and think about some of the things that our residents need.
Other questions for the applicant's representative this time? Mr. Hodge, I did have one. So again, there were two separate applications that made through. The earlier one, to be very, very clear, four stories and included the commercial. Is that correct?
Let me, let me just make sure there, with, on this same property, the existing zoning on the property allows more than four stories. I believe it's in the sixty-foot height district, so it allows those buildings I talked about, those mixed-use buildings with first-floor retail units above. The original zoning that we filed to replace that rezoning with this application included the four-story building, four-story buildings up on the north side of this site, the mixed-use buildings with ten thousand square feet of retail.
Okay. And that was rejected by the Air Commission?
Correct.
So the original application had commercial built into it, and that was rejected?
Correct.
You all then retooled the application and brought this back?
Correct.
To the Air Commission and to us?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members at this time? Thank you. I think we've heard from city staff that what has been proposed here fits the current land use recommendations within this area. I understand when we talk about what is aspirational for communities wanting, that is not potentially viable in every single project that comes before us. And we've also heard a lot of discussion around things that are not actually zoning-related. The question before us is whether or not the land use question is appropriate to be rezoned. In my opinion, it is, and I think this applicant in particular has tried to work with this commission over the years on this application. I understand that folks are not pleased with where it ended, but I do think it's right to move forward with this evening, so therefore, this time I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Rosa, DePodia, Beatty, DeAlkauer, Dorans, Green, Remi, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number zero-seven, zero-three dash twenty-twenty-five, rezone one-four-seven-zero North Hague Avenue, being twenty-nine-point-two-plus acres, low-ke on the east side of North Hague Avenue, three, thirty-two-hundred-plus feet south of Trabu Road, from M-two Manufacturing District in R-Rural District to LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. Site consists of three parcels. The parcel is developed with an equestrian school. The other two parcels were recently annexed into City Columbus and developed a single-unit dwelling. The requested rezoning would allow an apartment complex containing up to four-hundred-and-sixty units. For all those approvals from city staff, Development Commission, and the West Scioto Air Commission. We do have one public speaker signed up to speak against this ordinance, so because of that, we will now have presentation from city staff and the applicant's representative. First, we'll hear from the Billion Zoning Services, Mr. Phil Ishir.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Dorans, and members of council. As stated, the twenty-nine-point-two acre site consists of three parcels. The first, zoned in the M-two Manufacturing District, is developed with an equestrian school. The other two are developed, single-unit dwellings, and are zoned in the R-Rural District. The applicant requests the LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District to allow for the establishment of a residential apartment complex. North, south, and west of the site are single-unit dwellings on unincorporated parcels in Franklin Township. Also, south of the site is a multi-unit residential development in the LAR-12 Limited Apartment Residential District. East of the site is railroad right-of-way. Site is within the planning boundaries of the Trabu Roberts Area Plan, which recommends very-low-density residential and low-medium-density residential land uses at this location. Site is also subject to early adoption of Columbus citywide planning policies, design guidelines. Site is located within the boundaries of the West Scioto Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. Limitation text includes a commitment to a maximum of four-hundred-and-sixty dwelling units and supplemental development standards addressing garage height, building setbacks, and perimeter yard. Text also includes commitments to develop the site in accordance with the submitted building building elevations and site plan. City Department's recommendation. Staff note, the proposed density of 15.75 dwelling units per acre is greater than the Trabu Roberts Area Plan land use recommendation of very-low-density residential and low-medium-density residential. However, staff recognize the existing LAR12 multifamily residential to the south and Columbus citywide planning policies, design guidelines, recommendations stating that projects that are proposed at a density higher than the recommended land use plan may be supported if they include a high level of site and agricultural, architectural design.
As mitigating factors.
Staff recognizes that the proposal meets the design guidelines of Columbus citywide planning policies and therefore, city department's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Sheer. Any question to the department this time for my colleagues? Seeing none, I will invite the applicant's representative, Mr. Jeff Brown, to the podium for a presentation. Welcome back to council. Mr. Brown, I think you're the first applicant we've had since COVID to have their own PowerPoint. So you're, you're breaking ground here in the post-COVID era.
I have a very thorough client, so we do this all the time.
Well, floor is yours, sir.
President Harden, zoning chair Dorance, council members. I'm Jeff Brown with Smith &amp; Hale, here with a multifamily project that we started in May of last year. We engaged with the West Scioto Area Commission as well, the neighbors who had showed up at various meetings. We even, and this was very good because we left the meeting and we got later on a whole list of questions. And so that was a list that we worked for in terms of how we did our response. And the end result of all this, at the end of the day, is that we got approval from West Scioto. Unanimous approval from the Development Commission. And we have city staff approval. If we could, oh, gosh. You guys always make me do this. I'm not sure. I mean, we do everything from connectivity. The planners have, have told me enough on these applications that we kind of do this automatically. This drawing shows the various internal connections that we have and what we connect to. In addition to this, we did something that Metro Development has never done in the development that I've worked on. West Scioto was very insistent that they wanted to see a playground. Our demographic isn't directed toward children and everything, but as part of the process and discussions, we have included a playground with this overall development. What you see here is the site plan. This went through a couple of different iterations. The important thing, when you look at it, at the north of that is the railroad tracks and a city quarry, which is now a lake. On either side of the, the long, narrow bottom of the L that comes out is township residential. And so when we laid out this development, we tried to do as much as we could to have end of the units facing our neighbors. We agreed to put a fence around the property there, upgrade the landscaping. You notice two areas on that site plan that have Red Cross hatches on. The Parks Department asked us if, if we would preserve those areas. They are wooded. They also asked for a, a pathway easement through that property as part of their future plans for the overall development and connectivity of pathways. And so we did that. From a traffic standpoint, we did more than RTS required. We had the typical turn lanes, but there's a charter school up the street that has some issues in terms of traffic and backup. We extended our left-turn lane all the way from our property to tie it into the existing left-turn lane to try to improve the overall traffic pradim. We also are making a contribution at Trabu and Hague, dealing with the county engineers. With this location, we had the opportunity to both deal with the county engineer and the city of Columbus. So I think the tra, the traffic information is all covered between those two organizations. So you've heard the various discussions about the need for housing. I won't repeat those. This is an appropriate development. We listened to the neighbors. We listened to the area commission. We did the appropriate things in terms of how we connect internally and externally. And as I said, this time around, we even did a playground, which we've never done before. Staff approval, West Scioto approval, Development Commission approval, and we would ask council to approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions, my colleagues, for the applicants representative? Thank you. Seeing none, we do have, again, our West Scioto Air Commission, Ms. Cabral, with us, who I believe wanted to make a comment on this application as well. Commissioner, floor is yours.
Council members, I, we approved this project, so no comments in regards to that. A comment in regards to the road, Hague Road. Hague Road, when, when property is annexed into the city, the, the section in front of the project becomes the city. Then we have part of the road as being township. And then we have part of the road being county. It, it's a problem in our area. And we need to address this, all of us. And that's the only comment I want to make in regards to this because we've got, as I said, we've got another application coming up. And so we have a little pocket here that is the city, township, city, you know? It's a mess.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. That's something that we'll make sure that we follow up with Chair Brosa de Padilla about with regard to public service. Thank you. We do have one public speaker sign to speak against this ordinance, Ms. Susan Dool. Ms. Dool, welcome to council. Thank you for being here tonight. Podium is yours and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My primary concern is the existing traffic safety on Hague. And so I would like to start out by saying that myself and many others understand the need for more housing in central Ohio and support efforts to meet the needs. We do support that. But we're concerned that the rush to meet the needs is encouraging development under reduced construction standards and allowing developers to complete projects before necessary and long overdue road construction is even started. The location of the proposed 1470 North Hague is just north of the intersection of West Mills Drive and Hague Avenue. It's also just north of a dip in Hague Avenue large enough to conceal a full-size car even at night. Numerous accidents have occurred at this location. The development includes 460 apartments that are estimated to generate 800 new vehicles on Hague Avenue. Conversations with firefighters confirm the limitations of Hague being, being mostly a two-lane road without shoulders. Moving over for emergency vehicles is limited due to lack of shoulders. In some places, it's impossible to move over due to two bridges and steep drop-offs. Approximately 170 feet of the developer's frontage does not meet current county standards of an 11-foot travel lane and five-foot paved shoulder. One resident told me yesterday that he had witnessed a fire truck heading north on Hague that had to go back into a neighbor's yard to turn around because of standing traffic on Hague. Residents have indicated that emergency services from Upper Arlington have been used to answer calls on Hague. Traffic congestion includes stop, stop track. Traffic is partly due to the Columbus Preparatory Com, excuse me, Academy. It is, traffic is often at a, at a standstill. Multiple traffic studies have been created using data collected at five sites along Hague Avenue, but none are at the proposed property site of 1470. In addition, the collection dates, times, and locations don't represent traffic due to after-school pickup. The last data collections were done in 2023 and 2024. But again, the timing was not necessarily at the busiest time on Hague Road. Even existing, even using those existing traffic studies, a southbound 175-foot left-turn lane and a northbound 225-foot right-turn lane are required. A variance to reduce the right-turn lane by 90 feet is necessary due to the presence of the bridge. Plans for the 1470 Hague development include an emergency vehicle entrance at the back of the property. The entrance is via, via Saffin Road off of Fisher. It's assumed that this provision is because of existing traffic issues on Hague.
Ms. Dool, you can finish.
Traffic is slow and even stopped with no shoulder to pull over to allow emergency vehicles to pass. And I'd like you to consider these issues as the way I did, as if your loved ones live there. Because I have friends and loved ones that live there.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council members for our public speaker? Seeing none, thank you. Did want to invite Mr. Brown back to the podium if you have any comments you'd like to make based upon that testimony.
Obviously, I'm not a traffic engineer. So on these particular issues, I have to defer to our consultant, the county engineers, and the city of Columbus. We prepared the study per their requirements. They reviewed it. They told us the, what to be placed in the limitation texts in terms of the traffic improvements. And that's what we've done. So not only are we doing turn lanes in front of our development, as I said, we're extending that turn lane up and to connect it with the turn lane that goes into the charter school as the lady indicated that there is an issue up there. So we're improving that. We are also contributing to the county's proposed improvement at Hague and Trabu. So from a traffic standpoint, not only have we handled our traffic, we have also made significant contributions beyond what was really required in the TIS to handle our traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any, Councilor Banksen?
Mr. Brown, I know you said, I'm looking at the map here. And then you go up to the existing turn lane. How far south does that turn lane go?
I guess, can we? The southbound turn lane is 175 feet, including a 15-foot diverging taper. If, if you look at the aerials, so what we're talking about is in terms of where our site is, a southbound turn lane and a northbound right-turn lane into our development. And then further up, you'll see Chippewa Street, which is where that Mosaic Education is a charter school there. And there is a problem in terms of people. We thought they were coming early, but what's happening is people want to get there first in line. And so they show up like 45 minutes before school's out and just park. And, and that's a problem the police are aware of and the county engineer is aware of that. So in terms of our discussion, again, trying to help out with the situation in terms of Hague Avenue, we've agreed to extend our turn lane to match the existing left-turn lane at Chippewa.
We also have a representative from the Department of Public Service here because I just want to acknowledge what the commissioner said. It is, it does get a little tricky. And the good thing is, is that this is one of the things that comes when development happens, right? Is that sometimes we can meet either some sort of an agreement with counties or townships as to whether we're going, whether that's road maintenance, road improvements, traffic improvements. Because depending upon the capacity, right? We have a little bit more capacity than townships sometimes have. And so sometimes we can come to an agreement. But is there any updates that you want to give, Dan, from, essentially from the Department of Public Service as it pertains to? I know that Hague is actually one of the streets that is, we, we talked a little bit about some of the traffic studies that were done. I know that Hague is on our list of some improvements, I think, down the road. But if there's anything that you also want to share from the, from the perspective of the department in terms of safety along this particular corridor and street?
Sure. And I guess I can understand some considerations related to how the jurisdiction line can overlap here and there, particularly with the annexations that come in. I guess what I can speak to is that the standards are consistent between city and county related to the, the basic parameters that we're looking at, related to improvements. And, and the county has their own improvements to, that often occur, at least along the frontage. Typically, they do have a requirement to improve a roadway to a minimum 11-foot with a five-foot shoulder along their frontage. That, that's, I'm kind of putting words in the county's mouth, but that's typically the county standard. And sometimes that, they often sometimes take fees in lieu for that. But in any event, the, the county engineer's office is largely going to be the permitting agency for, for the improvements here. But those plans will be reviewed by both Franklin County Engineer's Office and the city of Columbus.
And then can you also just give me the timeline on if this were to pass, breaking ground and then completion of project? What that would look like roughly?
We would, let's see, it's, it's March now. Probably by the end of this year, we could start.
And then how long would the project take to completion?
Three years.
Three years?
Three years.
Okay.
And as, as Mr. Bledgemere just said, in the text is the requirement to widen our frontage along Hague Avenue to meet the, the county standard. That's another one of our commitments.
So I, I, I asked for the timeline because, Commissioner, I think when this would, this is a good opportunity for us to have these continued conversations. And to our resident who came down to talk about those concerns, this is a good time for us to continue having conversations about traffic concerns. So if we move that over here for just a second, right? Knowing that we have those concerns, I think that we have a runway to really start to discuss what are some of the things that we need to put in place and that we can continue to have those conversations. So I just wanted to thank you for taking us down this road for just a second because I think that you cannot talk about housing without talking about transportation. Usually when folks come down, this is the number one, well, I would say, at least in the top five, concerns that folks have around when new developments are coming. And so I just want to assure folks that I'm happy to continue to have these conversations. I'm happy we're going to be speaking to the commission soon so we can go back and look at some of these. We're going to be having a South Side Town Hall sometime soon. So we will ensure, keep an eye out for that date because then we can talk about some of the things that are coming. And these are some of the questions that folks can, can ask when we have more of our public service representatives there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Just so it's clear, if I could, in terms of our improvements, those go in as part of the overall development. So we won't be building these units without those turn lines or anything of that nature.
Thank you for that clarification. And then, and, and just so folks know, that happens with all of our projects. Is a requirement of anyone who's making those developments. That was a code change that we also made, that those are now the responsibility of the developers when we see those changes that need to happen. So.
Thank you, council member. Any other questions from council members for the applicants representative departments? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
So as Councilmember Brosa de Padilla mentioned, when we talk about sort of traffic issues, these are sort of long-term issues across a growing city like Columbus. I think as Mr. Brown mentioned, I am also not a traffic engineer. So I have to rely upon those at the city and our consultants that are, who have reviewed this project and have approved it. So therefore.
I just dangerously speak like a traffic engineer sometimes. Just kidding. Those are jokes.
So at this point, I do believe this project is appropriate to move forward given the land use at issue at this point. So I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorance, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0725-2025 to rezone 2897 Johnstown Road, being 2.3-plus acres located in the southeast side of Johnstown Road, 170-plus, plus feet west of Bridgeway Avenue from our rural district LM Limited Manufacturing District. Site consists of one parcel developed with manufacturing. They requested council, requested rezoning while a less objectionable manufacturing uses. Proposal is approved from city staff, Development Commission, and is not located within the boundaries of an air commission or civic association. Seeing no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timberosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akawar, Dorance, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have, moving into council variances portion of the agenda, we have ordinance 3578-2024 to grant a variance provision section 3333.18, building lines in 3333.255, perimeter yard at the Columbus city coast, a property located at 3451 Trabu Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. This is the concurrent variance, the rezoning ordinance we considered earlier in our agenda to allow for a 300-unit residential complex with building setbacks and perimeter yard variances for that complex. Again, the proposals approved from city staff, Development Commission, and Resilience. Again, the proposals approved from city staff, development commission, and received a tie vote from the Sida, West Sida Area Commission, which is technically a disapproval. Due to that tie vote, we'll have Mr. Eastman Johnson from Department of Building Zoning Services to discuss the variance.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Dorance, members of council. 11.2-acre site consists of nine parcels developed with single-unit dwellings in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The request includes variances to reduce the building setback along Traboo Road and to reduce the required perimeter yard. The site plan commitment is included in this request that demonstrates a 300-unit apartment complex, along with a conceptual building rendering. North of the site is a mix of residential, commercial, and manufacturing uses in the R Rural, C2 Commercial, and LM Limited Manufacturing Districts. South and east of the site is a multi-unit residential development in the LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. West of the site are single-unit dwellings in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant has received a recommendation approval from staff and from the development commission for a concurrent rezoning request, C23-012, to the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Subject site is within the planning boundaries of the Traboo Roberts Area Plan, which recommends neighborhood mixed-use land uses at this location. Additionally, the plan includes early adoption of C2P2 design guidelines. Site is located within the boundaries of the Westland Area Commission, whose recommendation is for disapproval. Staff recognizes that there are practical difficulties with the reduction of the building setback and perimeter yard with this request. City Department's recommendation. Proposed reduction to building setback and perimeter yard are consistent with the previously approved zoning at this location and are also consistent with design guidelines in the Traboo Roberts Area Plan that encourage commercial overlay standards, such as reduced building setback from Traboo Road, aimed at creating a development in a less suburban context. Additionally, the requests include commitments to develop the site in accordance with the submitted site plan and building rendering. Therefore, city department's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions for the department at this time? Do want to invite Mr. Hodge back to the podium to speak directly to the variances at issue here?
Members of council, this is the companion piece to the rezoning legislation that I was up 15 minutes or so ago on. This is two variances. That is building setback along Traboo Road, and that's to allow these northernmost buildings that I can at least see on my screen, I assume you guys can see on yours, to frame the edge of Traboo Road. Those buildings doing so actually meets the commercial overlay standard, which is a recommendation of the Traboo Roberts Area Plan in terms of form of the development, and does not, does not create a detriment to the ability to incorporate road improvements and also incorporate the shared-use path up there along the northern side of the property. The other variance is to the perimeter yard. You can see that on the south side of the property is an existing apartment residential development. To the east of the property is an existing apartment residential development, and so that is to reduce the perimeter yard in those locations, and also on the west, which is property that my client either owns or controls. And so those variances are from residential to residential and don't serve as a detriment in any way, shape, or form to anyone. So those are the two variances. But the other important thing about this companion piece is that it provides the vehicle in the city of Columbus by which we can commit to the site plan that you see, and also to the architecture that we have shown, both to planning in the city throughout and also the West Sida Area Commission. And this allows the, the community and the city to hold a developer's feet to the fire, because this demonstrates the aesthetic and the site plan that must be developed on the property. So that's the other reason that this companion piece is important. I'll stop there and do my best to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Any questions from council members? Thank you. Seeing none, I will see if our resident West Sida Area Commissioner is with, here with us tonight, has any comments on, on the variance?
No, no comments, just what I said earlier.
Thank you, Commissioner. After review of both the applicant submissions and the staff report, I do believe that the hardships have been met in this case, so I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. Next move to amend, move to amend as submitted to clerk.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Thank, thank you. I next move for passage as amended.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0692-2025 to grant a variance provision in section E 20.100, use of the Columbus City Coats, a property located at 3224 South High Street to allow external accessory storage in the CAC Community Activity, Community Activity Center District. The site consists of one parcel developed with a bowling alley. Requested council variance will allow an accessory, accessory external storage area along the rear of the existing building for vehicles and equipment utilized for business activities. Accountants of variance is necessary because the current CAC district and previous C4 district do not allow for external storage. Proposal is approved from city staff and the far south Columbus Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0701-2025 to grant a variance provision in section 3332.03R1 Residential District, 3332.11R1 Area District Requirements, and 3332.27 Rear Guard. Columbus City Coats are properly located at 2405 McCutcheon Road to allow two single dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R1 Residential District. Site consists of one parcel developed with a single unit dwelling. Requested council variance will allow a second dwelling unit as, as well as a variance of minimum net floor area for living quarters and rear guard. Proposals approved from city staff and the Northeast Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0704-2024 to grant a variance provision in section 3333.18 Building Lines, 3333.255 Perimeter Yard, and 3333.35 G Private Garage. Columbus City Coats are properly located at 1470 Northerlake Avenue to allow reduced development standards for apartment complex in the LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. This is a concurrent variance for the rezoning we heard earlier for an apartment complex containing up to 480 units. Proposal, proposed variance allows reduced building lines, reduced perimeter yard, increased height of detached garages for the proposed complex. Proposals approved from city staff and the West Sida Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Next, move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0715-2020...
Chair, can I say something really quick? I'm sorry. I just wanted to acknowledge, I kept saying South Side, I promise I know it was the West Side. I'm sorry, your girl's a little rusty before I get my Columbus Kid card revoked. I do know my side's the town, so I just wanted to apologize, but you all were so very kind to me, and I appreciate that. Continue on, thank you.
Thank you, council member. I was going to grab your ear afterwards, but thanks for correcting the record yourself. Next, we have ordinance 0715-2024 to grant a variance provision in section 3332.035 R3 Residential District, 3312.49 Required Parking. Columbus City Coats are properly located at 295 Reba Avenue to allow a social services center with reduced parking in the R3 Residential Districts. The site consists of two parcels, developed a religious facility and single unit dwelling. The requested council variance will allow the existing religious facility to be converted into a nonprofit soul service center. It also recruits, reduce the number of required parking spaces from 39 to 28 spaces. Proposals approved from city staff and the Columbus South Side Area Commission. And before I start saying things very, very quickly still, I do want to stop and acknowledge that this is an expansion of a very, very important youth center that services many unhoused young people in our community. I think Ben Sears is here from, from the organization, who many of us know from his work across the community, and it's something that we're really excited for them to, to take this to another parts of the city to serve youth all across Columbus. So again, thanks for being here tonight, thanks for expanding these services for some of our young folks that need support, especially now more than ever. So appreciate expanding the footprint of the organization. With that, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
And I just realized I didn't say the name of the organization, Star House. Sorry. Thank you all for being here. Next, we have ordinance number 0723-2024 to grant a variance provision in section 3332.033 R2 Residential District, 3332.19 Fronting, 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitted, 3332.29 Height District, 3332.38 Private Garages, 3345.07 Consists of Application for PUD and 3345.11 Site Plan. Requirements for showing parcels developing dwelling units in multiple family unit buildings in Columbus City Coats are properly located at 5526 East Dublin Grandview Road to allow an estate lot with multiple single-unit dwellings and accessory residential buildings and reduced developments in the PUD 4 Plan Unit Development District. Site consists of one undeveloped parcel and a portion of another undeveloped parcel within a different Franklin County taxing district, which precludes parcel combination. The requested council variance will allow the site to be developed with eight single-unit dwellings and not plotted lots, along with garages, accessory buildings, and residential amenities. The additional variances would include allowing dwelling and building on front of private streets, reducing minimum side yard, increasing building height to specific deviations from PUD development standards. Proposal is approved from city staff, and while there is no area commission representation within the area, the Northern County Council has reviewed the proposal and has approved. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row, ordinance 0723-2025.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accept it.
Again, next move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, council residents, all we have for tonight's morning agenda.
Seeing no further business coming for the zoning committee, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
We will reconvene, regular meeting in ten minutes.
Back to this point. I spoke about it a little bit, but as a newbie and you being an expert, we'd love to hear from you.
As to why the amendment's appropriate?
Why we are rehashing the aggregation agreement to begin with.
Um, I think I'm sorry. Could you say it again? Are you talking about the amendment itself or the aggregation MSA?
The aggregation MSA is being brought before council again because of outside changes, and I was hoping you can speak to that.
Yeah, once again, I think that AEP can provide better information than I can. But generally, we are trying to explore new energy sources within Ohio that can kind of diversify the portfolio. And one of the assets that we were hoping to include unfortunately did not get pushed through and development fell through. And so we kind of had to restrategize our portfolio and the assets that were being provided. Most importantly, with that cost containment in mind.
Thank you so much for that. Next, we have Zaher Duveret, and my apologies, Zaher, for messing up your last name. President Treble and Frank Wilson, Vice President of Mass Markets at AEP Energy, to give a brief presentation on the need to make these adjustments and answer questions from council.
Thank you. President Harden, Chair Weiss, and members of council, my name is Frank Wilson, Vice President of Retail Mass Markets at AEP Energy. We are the competitive retail supply business of American Electric Power affiliated with the utility AEP Ohio, but operating independently, and we do not speak on behalf or behalf of or represent AEP Ohio in any way. Since 2021, AEP Energy has proudly served the Clean Energy Columbus Municipal Aggregation with 100% clean energy. Together, we've created jobs, powered over 200,000 homes with clean energy, and delivered over $55 million in savings for residents since the program began. Clean Energy Columbus began with a bold vision to serve the residents of Columbus with 100% in-state renewables by 2024. However, the program is being impacted by broad challenges facing the renewable development industry. We came before council in December of 2023 to outline several of these issues, including inflation, supply chain challenges, Ohio statutory changes, and international turmoil. These headwinds have and continue to severely limit renewable development throughout the country, but significantly more in Ohio. These challenges have increased construction costs precipitously. Additionally, new uncertainty regarding Inflation Reduction Act tax incentives that help reduce wind farm cost has risen at the federal level. A key renewable asset development plan to serve the program is the Emerson Creek Wind Farm in Huron County, Ohio. This in-state wind facility had been expected to provide over a third of the electricity needed for the program. Emerson Creek's developer informed us that they are experiencing significant cost increases, which will require an upward adjustment of their rate. In addition to the industry challenges mentioned earlier, Emerson Creek has been challenged with permitting delays from the Ohio Power Siting Board, land control issues, increased turbine prices, and balance of plant installation costs to comply with prevailing wage and apprenticeship conditions in the Inflation Reduction Act, labor shortages, and finally, industry insurance market increases. As a result of these cost increases and the potential impact on the affordability of the energy supply for Columbus customers, this facility is no longer a viable option under the current price structure of the master supply agreement. Despite this challenge, AEP Energy remains committed to the original bold vision of Clean Energy Columbus. AEP Energy discussed these issues with Sustainable Columbus and their consultant, Trey Bell. The direction the city gave us was to be creative and find a way to honor the original intent of the program while making all efforts to continue to keep the rate cost competitive for residents versus the utilities default rate. Working collaboratively with the city and Trey Bell on the options, we believe the best outcome is to acquire 33% of the Emerson Wind Farm's electric production for the Clean Energy Columbus program. Although this is less than originally intended, it adds in-state generation to the portfolio and diversifies the generation mix and projects to maintain cost-competitive energy pricing. This will complement the Atlanta Farm Solar Project, which went online earlier this year, and the Clinton Solar Development, which is projected to go on later this year. The amendment before the council tonight facilitates this new structure and allows us to proceed with the developer. AEP Energy is very appreciative of the partnership and collaboration with Sustainable Columbus and Trey Bell. Collectively, this group has been tenacious to work around these headwinds before us, provide renewable energy solutions to achieve the city's Climate Action Plan goals, while always being mindful of cost to the residents of Columbus. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Frank, thank you for being here and providing that presentation. I'll open it up to my colleagues in just a second, but I am curious, given the headwinds, the roadblocks that we're seeing related to the environment, what can we be doing proactively to ensure that we're meeting our climate action plan goals?
Uh, thank you for the question, Councilmember Weiss. We are on a daily search for additional in-state renewable assets, both internally within AEP Energy and with in consultation with Trey Bell. As you're aware, there is not a lot out there. We've been very challenged to find developments that fit. We've worked with the city to adjust some of those goals and expectations and see if there's anything else that we can identify that could serve the program, and that is a daily, daily operation.
Thank you. Do you feel as if making this change prevents us from relooking at this agreement in six or 12 months?
Uh, I don't. Um, you know, within the partnership that we have with Sustainable Columbus is a constant conversation. So, um, the new deputy director and the deputy director before her is not bashful about holding our feet to the fire and holding us accountable as it relates to the residents. That includes everything from the green goals of what we want to accomplish with this, but also being mindful of the impact to residents.
Question. And one last question, and then we'll kind of open it up. Do you have the ability to contract directly with developers to build new projects? I know it's a little bit more work involved in that, but is that an option based on the agreement that is in place?
Yes, and that's what we're doing in this case. So there is a developer that is building Emerson. AEP Energy will partner with them and have an agreement once this amendment is signed.
But I mean, in terms of other developers and other projects to increase our share of in-state renewable energy, is that something that's also being explored?
It is. So we have a whole portfolio of developers that we talk to on a daily basis.
Appreciate it. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? No? Well, if you want to hold off, we have one more speaker, and I'm sure everyone else will be willing to jump in if needed. Frank, thank you for providing that testimony. Last, we have Spencer Deering from the Ohio Environmental Council, Vice President of Government Affairs, to provide some testimony on the ordinance as well.
All right. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. Council President Harden, President Pro Tem Dorans, and all of Columbus City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight regarding Columbus's energy aggregation program. My name is Spencer Deering, and I serve as the Vice President of Government Affairs for the Ohio Environmental Council Action Fund. OEC Action Fund General Counsel, my colleague Chris Tavner spoke to council two weeks ago about changes to the city's contract with AEP and Trey Bell Energy as Columbus reviews modifications to the MSA for the second time in two years. The OEC Action Fund recognizes regulatory challenges have impeded in-state renewable energy generation. While AEP Energy and Trey Bell have worked to secure in-state energy, Ohio currently lacks sufficient solar and wind power to meet program goals. As Columbus deliberates on this amended contract, we urge council and the administration to consider following the following proactive steps to better align with the Climate Action Plan and best serve our community. First, hold regular hearings on the status of the Columbus aggregation program. The Columbus Public, the council's Public Utilities Committee is well-positioned to hold regular hearings with the city, companies, and the public to discuss the program's successes and its ongoing challenges. The aggregation program has two primary goals. One, saving Columbus residents' money, and two, obtaining 100% renewable in-state generation. Both are bold, and both are important. We must consistently evaluate the program's progress in achieving both objectives and work to address obstacles. Community members and groups can offer valuable feedback and ideas that should be included in this process. Public hearings also provide the public and council with more time to consider future changes, rather than learning about these issues only a few weeks before council deliberates on the amendments. Recommendation number two, consider bold investments in programs designed to reduce energy use in the city of Columbus while increasing local use of renewable energy, renewable energy. Investing in energy efficiency for Columbus residents can lower electricity use, save money, and lessen dependence on the aggregation program to meet Climate Action Plan goals. Solutions like community solar or rooftop solar can further reduce demand. Columbus Council should explore these options to support the Climate Action Plan's renewable energy goals. And third, very importantly, require a transparent and robust RFP process in the future to ensure the city is receiving the very best service for its aggregation program. AEP Energy and Trey Bell have worked hard to launch Ohio's and or Columbus's electric aggregation program. However, other aggregators in Ohio may offer different approaches to achieving the in-state renewable energy generation and affordability. When it's time to renew this contract, we urge that Columbus City Council solicit proposals from other aggregators to ensure the best deal for its residents. The best option very well may still be Trey Bell or the current contractors, but a transparent RFP process is essential to determine if that's the case. The OEC Action Fund thoroughly thanks Councilmember Weiss and all of council for its continued support for the Columbus Clean Energy Aggregation Program, which aims to lower consumer costs and achieve 100% in-state renewable energy. Despite regulatory challenges, the strong leadership from Columbus Council and Sustainable Columbus will guarantee that residents benefit from this clean energy initiative. We appreciate the council's efforts and encourage ongoing advocacy for more transparency, accountability, and sustainability. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Spencer, thank you for being here and for your continued advocacy. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Deering, thank you for being here, and I think I agree with a significant amount of the points you've made here tonight. So I was the Public Utilities Chair when this originally came through in 2020. We had a lot of conversations around this, and I just want to name something here that I think has been critical towards there being a few different amendments to the MSA over the years with this, is that the regulatory environment is something that we've said out loud a lot here tonight, and we've said it in prior council hearings. Could you name that for us here a little bit? I mean, we literally had the Ohio Power Siting Board like a week ago, whatever it was, deny, you know, a solar project that would have been a massive investment in Ohio and clean energy, and how different that is compared to 2020 when this charter amendment was approved by voters, and then we stood up the program and, you know, started to engage with folks and how to actually operationalize this. And excuse me, if you could just really name that for us, because again, I think that's one of the biggest drivers when we talk about the lack of accessibility for some of this clean energy that we all expected back in 2020 to be able to gain access to through this program.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Dorans, Chair Harden, or Council President Harden. You know, I think first and foremost, absolutely, the regulatory environment has fundamentally changed in the last five years and will likely continue to change. We have seen a lot of legislation at the State House particularly aimed at creating new roadblocks to creating renewable energy here in the state of Ohio. But part of the reason why when we passed, as you're well aware, council member, when we passed this legislation, that we included the goals for 100% in-state renewable energy was to ensure that when AEP Energy and others go down to the State House, that they're advocating to stop putting those barriers in place to create more renewable energy here in the state of Ohio. Things like SB 52, which passed a couple of years ago, allow county commissions at the will of township trustees to flatly ban solar, utility-scale solar in their entire county. Those types of policies are fundamentally detrimental to us achieving 100% renewable energy, but it doesn't change the fact that we need to have that goal as a city and as a state. Our community has said that it wants 100% renewable energy, and it wants 100% renewable energy from the state of Ohio generated by Ohio union workers here in our state. And I think it's really critical that as we continue to acknowledge the regulatory changes that have absolutely happened, we also acknowledge that there is an opportunity for us to fight back against those regulatory challenges and provide additional pressure to both businesses and the state government to make sure that we have renewable energy available here in the state of Ohio.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, and I think that, to your point, makes the transparency of what is happening and why even more important, I think, as the program continues to mature and continues to serve residents. You know, we talked about these times which we've had to make changes, the ability to actually, you know, explain to the community about why and what that means for them, what that means for the goals of the program. I think that's central to, I think, the argument that you've made, you know, here tonight and certainly before us before, and certainly appreciate OEC doing that.
Thank you, and we appreciate your advocacy.
Any additional questions, comments from my colleagues?
Just a comment. I want to thank Press Bo Tim for bringing clarity to the appropriate boogeyman in this conversation that has continued to made it harder for us to do what I would thank you for, which bring clarity on why we are even, why we have this program, which is to lower cost and to provide 100% renewable energy to our constituents. So I think that this is a necessary next step, but we appreciate everybody being at the table. There have been a lot of conversation between the departments, between OEC, between Councilmember Weiss's office, and I thank you, council member, for stewarding this conversation, and our outside partners at AEP and Treble to get to where we are today. It sounds like there are more conversations to come, but we will always have a table for these type of discussions, so we make sure that we are meeting our goal even through obstacles.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
So I'm going to take us back for just a second. For folks who watch this, right? And I think, you know, when people look at their utility bills, I think sometimes it's very, they don't understand them, right? They don't understand, why am I getting billed? What does this mean? What does another carrier mean? So AEP is my electric company, but somebody else is providing a source, or Columbia Gas, or could you, in the brief, as an advocacy organization, in, you know, two minutes, if someone was watching this and they're trying to follow the conversation, and they're going to have some knowledge, right? They're going to have maybe some basis, but how does this affect me as my consumer? When I get my electric bill, why do I care? And like, what does this mean for me? And I feel like anytime we talk about utilities, I mean, Councilmember Weiss will attest to this, I feel like, especially I think about communities that, you know, you don't get an electric bill that has like 20 lines on it if you're coming from another place, if you're coming from another country, and like, how do we make things accessible for them? So could you just make it super easy? Like, why does, am I a consumer? What does this mean for me?
That question is fantastic. Thank you, council member and Chair, oh, keep calling you Chair, President Harden. You know, I think that's a question that I ask our energy policy folks all the time, myself. But to distill it down a little bit here, as well as I can with my knowledge, what we are talking about here is energy aggregation, which is the program that allows the city of Columbus to work together, aggregate on how we negotiate our energy prices and get our energy from a company like AEP Energy. So rather than individuals going out and getting a bill from AEP Energy, we can, as a city, choose, and we did back in 2019, voted to aggregate and to negotiate those costs and services as a unit. It is an opt-out system as well, so folks have the opportunity to opt out if they so desire. However, so with that program, with clean energy aggregation, what we've been able to do is actually lower costs for consumers, and that is a huge benefit, especially given the fact that people are right now certainly not overpaying for energy. We are really, really, folks are really hurting on their energy bills, and so it's a big goal of ours to continue to make it more accessible and environmentally sustainable, of course, but also more affordable. With the energy aggregation, that has successfully lowered our costs, but we also said in energy aggregation that we care about our values too, and we care about where our city is going. So while we do want to lower our costs, we want to lower our costs with 100% renewable energy. So where AEP Energy is going to go out and purchase energy from generation, from folks who are either generating energy here in Ohio with all different types of energy, or across the country, or if they're using clean energy credits to make up for clean energy that's not from Ohio, but they are getting it from other places, or they're purchasing credits in lieu of purchasing the energy directly. So that is the extent of some of my knowledge around the back end of it, but what I can say definitively is that the clean energy aggregation program is saving consumers money, but it is also getting more expensive, and it is more difficult to get 100% renewable energy here in the state of Ohio. We 100% agree with that. What we would like to see is more transparency, more accountability, and more collaboration between the community organizations and the providers to be creative about what opportunities and different mechanisms are out there for us to continue to push toward the goal that Columbus has put forth, which is that we have lower costs and 100% renewable energy.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. And I feel like, you know, I know that sometimes we have longer meetings, utilities is sometimes at the end, and it's a thing that every single person in this room has a utility bill. And I feel like sometimes we gloss over these like very big issues that, you know, you don't think about until that bill comes in the mail, and you're like, why am I paying, why do I have a $200 electric bill this month? Or why am I paying this much? Or I'm shopping around, and this isn't, this isn't making things better for me. And so I just want to ensure that if we have teachable moments for folks, because I think we can certainly, on the advocacy side, advocate for those things, but we want to ensure that our residents also understand what we're, what we're actually fighting for, right? And that if they are then interested, that they can be on the advocacy side along with us. So thank you for, thank you for taking that moment. I just want to make sure that, you know, this is attainable for all, so.
No worries. Thank you for the questions. And again, Spencer, thank you for your advocacy. The reality is, is this is one of the most innovative aggregation programs across the country. And if it wasn't for the regulatory environment that we would be faced, we are currently facing, we would not be here. It is interesting that we have folks talking about this coming energy crisis here in the state of Ohio, yet they continue to put up roadblocks towards renewable energy. We will never meet our goals if those roadblocks continue to stand. And we, as a council, and you as a stakeholder, and everybody in this room should be pushing for folks at the State House to get out of the way so we can produce renewable energy here in the state of Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. And with that, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. All right. Now I have ordinance 0033-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Interliner Solutions LLC for the mainline lining James Livingston V Blueprint Area Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the sanitary revolving loan fund, to authorize a transfer of cash appropriations within the sanitary bond fund, and to authorize the expenditure of $16,433,350.65 from the sanitary revolving loan fund and sanitary bond fund to pay for the project. This funding will be used to rehabilitate approximately 130,000 feet of water pipes and approximately 466 associated manholes. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 0164-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Kokosin Industrial Incorporated for the Southerly Wastewater Treatment Plant, Organics Receiving and Bioenergy Utilization Facility Project, to authorize a waiver of competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code, to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the sanitary revolving loan fund, to authorize a transfer of cash and appropriation within the sanitary bond fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $443,277,000 from the sanitary revolving loan fund and sanitary bond fund to pay for the project. This facility will enable the city to utilize the bioenergy from organic waste in our landfills. Through this recycling process, we can capture energy from organics instead of simply letting them create methane that will warm the planet. Now, I know we spent a lot of money in public utilities, but this is a very large amount even for us, and so I want to kick it to the Deputy Director just to speak to the project and the waiver of competitive bidding.
Thank you, council member. We're really excited to be discussing the bioenergy project today. The Southerly Organics Receiving and Bioenergy Utilization Facility is the department's largest construction project to date. This clean energy project will convert biogas to energy with the potential to achieve a tax credit of $120 million. We're hopeful for the continuation of the Inflation Reduction Act and are monitoring the impact of the president's executive orders. During the last year, we have been working closely with the Ohio EPA and Ohio Water Development Authority to achieve the lowest cost of borrowing in order to minimize costs to our ratepayers. The project was bid in the competitive bidding process, but after considerable outreach, we only had one bid, actually, and it was higher by about $100 million than our engineers' estimate. So the way that we chose to address that was to enter into negotiations, which actually meant that we had to do a waiver. So we're hoping that through this negotiation process, we can reduce it by about $102 million. And so I think I've addressed all of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next two ordinances address the same projects. I'll describe them before reading the titles and moving for passage. Ordinance 0194-2025 and 0227-2025 both address the Eureka Fremont Lateral Linings Project within the greater Hilltop area, which aims to reduce water flooding in basements and sanitary overflows in, to homes in the area. So the titles, ordinance 0194-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a contract modification with CTL Engineering Incorporated for the Construction Administration Construction Inspection Services 2023-2025 Contract to appropriate funds within the sanitary revolving loan fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,285,597.09 from the sanitary revolving loan fund to pay for the project. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 0227-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with BLD Services LLC for the Blueprint Hilltop I Eureka Fremont Lateral Linings Project V Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the sanitary revolving loan fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project, and to authorize the expenditure of $8,394,947.83 from the sanitary revolving loan fund and the sanitary bond fund to pay for the project. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 0437-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with the Ryder Company Incorporated for the Green Lawn Dam Rehabilitation Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the Storm Sewers Revolving Loan Fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,963,978 from the Storm Sewers Revolving Loan Fund and the Storm Sewers Bond Fund to pay for the project. Stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 0540-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into an agreement with Burmax Incorporated to provide water meter-reading services for the Vision of Water, to authorize the expenditure of $2,200,000 from the Water Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. Following the city's invitation for bid process, this legislation will allow DPU to create a new contract with Burmax Incorporated for these services as it was deemed the lowest, most responsible bid. The amendment in the budget would allow for the company to be paid for materials and services from the Water Operating Fund. An emergency is being requested as this is an urgent matter of preventing interruption to meter-reading services, which provide information about leaks and damages to infrastructure and consumption levels. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Question.
Sorry.
This is the only company pursuant to the bid?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in public utilities sustainability this evening. However, I do have one code change in rules and policy. May I proceed?
Please.
Thank you. In rules and policy, I have ordinance 0699-2025 to amend provisions of ordinance 3412-2024 to establish a Columbus Advisory Commission on Disability Issues by enacting Chapter 177 of the Columbus City Code to repeal existing provisions of ordinance 3412-2024 and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is correcting a technical error in drafting and merely moves the commission to its own section of code. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, Dorans Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have.
Seeing no further business, come before council, is their motion to adjourn. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, Dorans Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We have several...